On time.
This is the Situate Planning Board. We have an agenda that's been posted. We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first up is Continue Public Hearing: Small Cell Attachments to Three Telephone Call Locations. And I won't read those, but I believe we have a request for continuance.
Yeah, we have a letter requesting a continuance from the applicant.
Okay. Do you have a motion, or should we just make it up?
I move to continue the three public hearings for the small cell attachments adjacent to 14 Allen Place, 26 Kennelworth Street, and 32 Harvard Street until November 9th, 2017 at 9:15 PM. And to continue the time for action for filing with the town clerk until November 21st, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Form A, 88 Stockbridge Road, and 1 Common Street. I think that's you, Mr. Bush.
Mr. Chairman, I submitted a letter before this meeting requesting to withdraw without prejudice the Form A for 88 Stockbridge Road.
Okay.
That was correct, he submitted it when he came in the room.
Alright.
I move to accept the applicant's request to withdraw the approval not required plan of land in Situate, Mass. Or, no, sorry, approval not required, a plan of land in Situate, Mass. Showing division of parcels 49-1, -1, and 49-1-7A, 88 Stockbridge Road, and 1 Common Street by Moore and Surveying Incorporated dated October 16th, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Done. How about Form A, 84 Branch Street? Okay.
Again, Gregory Morris representing the property owner, Gail, and Kenneth Michaud. The property is 84 Branch Street. I brought the plan before the board, probably about six months ago, to create a lot. Lot is in the back corner of Michaud's property and has frontage on Manor Road. A strip of land to that lot, too, and an area of land on the western corner of the property where we had more favorable soil testing for septic system. So what we end up here is, we end up with Lot 1, which is the existing house, 84 Branch Street, has a total of 237 feet of frontage. It has two and a half acres associated with it. Lot 2R is the lot that has the frontage on Manor Road. It has 457 feet of frontage on Manor Road, and 30,511 square feet of land area. It's entirely upland land area. This is in the half acre zoning district. It should be a fairly straightforward endorsement.
Am I right, this looks like a barbell?
Yep.
And the skinny part is, is it an easement, or is it actually owned?
The skinny part is owned by Lot 2R. They would own this piece of land and come down here. This is where their leaching field would be constructed for the house at this location. The easement, we have a note regarding it. It's an easement for the benefit of Lot 1R. They have a water service utility there. They also have a gravel driveway over that area. So they're retaining an easement over that strip of land.
Karen, do you have anything?
Well, this is, well, Lot 1R has frontage and access on Branch Street, and Lot 2R has frontage and access on Manor Road, so it can be endorsed. And like Greg said, you saw this plan before. This is a wonderful example of a rat tail.
No, rat tails.
It's a barbell rat tail.
Nope.
Yeah, of all the rat tails, this one isn't. Based on the, what's happening here, it's not that bad, as some we've seen.
There's no 90-degree turns in this one.
Yeah.
Somebody's got to mow it, though, right? Alright. People that might want to say something. Yes.
I don't know exactly how this might sign in, but the two of us are 15 Manor Road.
Could you just identify yourself?
Yes, Mark McGinn is 15 Manor Road. And the only real concern that we have has to do with when the building begins. Historically, I've been there for 30-some-odd, almost 40 years. My neighbor here will say a little bit longer than that, and won't say anymore. And somehow or another, whether it's GPS, everything that has to do with Manor Road, they have to go through those Branch Street gates. The trucks hit them and destroy them, and they have to be repaired by the Historical Society over and over again. The road was in, is in horrible condition. It was never repaired properly after the water main was put back. We, as a group on this, on the road, had it resurfaced with the stuff from the DPW office four years ago. And then, of course, two years ago, when they did the water main, tore the whole thing up. I mean, it was great for those two years. At any rate, we forever are going, it's a private road, so we're forever going and getting crusher run and putting it in ourselves and all that kind of stuff. So the request here is simply if there was some way to make sure that the builders, when they start doing the work, they approach from Lawson Road and, it's very close to Lawson Road, there's no need to be coming all the way down Manor Road to get to this lot. If there was some way to stipulate that, that would be great.
We can do that here, can't we?
You can't.
This is just an A and R.
You can't.
This is, we have to have the building department, right?
You should talk to the owners to ask them to have construction go in for Lawson Road.
Owners, as in owner of the full-blown property, or the new owners who will be owning the little house of some sort?
Both. The potential, the people who are doing the new house, too. You should let them know, and your engineer knows, so perhaps he can convey this along as well.
Okay.
Greg? Wasn't this the one that we were worried about, the width? And then we, you saw pictures, or you provided pictures, where we increased the, we, I said we, increased the width, and there was gravel that was recently done there?
Yeah, there was a question regarding the fire department's access to that. And I ended up getting a letter from the fire department.
I saw that on TV. That gravel was put in by one of the residents on Lawson Road, and that was filling in potholes. The width, I know nothing about.
You essentially determined, when you did your last Form A, that it had adequate width for the construction, based on, after the potholes were filled in, et cetera, and it had the 14 to 16-foot width.
But I guess my understanding, I'm just trying to figure out, was that the access was from Lawson, as opposed to from Branch typically? Because as that road, as you go up the road, it gets narrower and narrower, and more pothole and dirty, or dirty, more, less gravel, is my understanding.
I would anticipate most of the access coming off of Lawson Road. This is right at the intersection with Lawson Road, essentially.
I would make a suggestion that regardless of what is conveyed to whoever the owners are, that somebody put up a sign at the gates, "All construction enters from Lawson Road." Just put up a sign. Put it in the ground. The other thing I would suggest that you do is call DPW, and have some pictures, and go in and see them, and say, you know, "You put in the water pipe, and you didn't put the street back the way it was. How do you plan to fix this?"
We already built with that.
Yeah. That's all over the town.
Oh, my God. Alright.
Okay, any other questions here? Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
I move to endorse, as approval not required, a plan of land in Situate, Mass. Showing a division of parcel 38-2-3, 84 Branch Street, prepared by Morse Engineering Co. Incorporated for applicant/owner Kenneth and Gail Michaud dated 10, October 18th, 2017. As the division of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because Lot 1R has access and frontage of at least the distance presently required by the Situate zoning bylaw on Branch Street. Lot 2R has frontage on the private way of Manor Road, which has a 40-foot right-of-way with a 14 to 16-foot way, a grade of 1 to 3 percent, and is compacted gravel construction. Manor Road was a way in existence on August 3rd, 1947, when the subdivision control law took effect in Situate, and there is sufficient width, grade, and construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use, and for installation of municipal services to serve the land and buildings erected. The division of the tract of land shown on the accompanying plan is not a subdivision because it shows a proposed conveyance or change in a lot line which does not alter the existing frontage as required under the Situate zoning bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Steve, assume you want that one?
I've got a couple minutes. Is there, is the opponent coming? No? There's probably no reason to wait, then.
No, just do it.
Okay, so we're on to the Continued Public Hearing: Major Site Plan Administrative Review Restaurant and Bar for 7 through 9 Marshfield Ave. I understand that we have a request to withdraw this?
No, continue.
Or just continue it?
We have a letter to continue it.
Okay.
They would like to continue it, and in the meantime, they have filed an application for a site plan waiver, which will hopefully be heard on November 9th.
Okay.
We're moving this to a continuation beyond the November 9th.
And I see, do you have anything you'd like to add, Jeff?
None of this application, per se. Just, I just was observing more than anything else.
I assume that the applicant knows that the request for site plan waiver is just that a request. There's no guarantee that he would get it.
Yes, that is the main clar to the applicant. He still wants to proceed down that line.
So do we have a motion?
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearings for the major site plan administrative review for 7 through 9 Marshfield Avenue until November 21st, 2017 at 9:30 PM. And to continue the time for action for filing with the town clerk until November 30th, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. Five minutes ahead of schedule for old business. Do we have a county?
Yes.
Move to approve the requisition of $1,376.52 to Horsley Witten Group for Engineering Peer Review for Seaside at Situate, Toll Brothers. For $390 to Merrill Corporation for Construction Inspections for Lot 2 Otis Place. For $390 to Merrill Corporation for Construction Inspections for Six Old Country Way. For $260 to Whitecrest Realty LLC for a refund of unexpended engineering money for Six Old Country Way. For $5,019.96 to Whitecrest Realty LLC for a refund of the landscape bond for Six Old Country Way. For $25,000 to Diamond Development Realty Trust for a partial refund of surety for 105 Hatherley Road. For $67 to J&amp;R Graphics for business cards. And two bills signed under the Municipal Modernization Act for $650 purchase order 1-802-118 to Merrill Corporation on August 30th, 2017. For engineering peer review for 90 and Vinyl Road. And $90 PO number 1-802-1492, MAPD on August 30th, 2017. And for 2017-2018 membership dues for Brad Washburn.
The money we're giving back to Six Country Way, is, that's all closed, then?
Six Old Country Way, and a certificate of ownership to have. So they had, we got a final report as part of that from Merrill, and we were holding a landscape bond to make sure that they did landscaping, and they did the same lighting and the driveway tied in.
That was part of Merrill's inspection?
That was part of Merrill's inspection.
Okay. Alright, do we have a second?
Just a real quick question. What were the Modernization Act bills?
They come August. They, I, we didn't get, there was one for Brad to be a member of MAPD, Planning Directors, and one for Merrill for peer review for Ann Viner.
Okay. So, going only for Ann, but a second?
Second.
Not sure if she, Ann, are you out for a while, or?
I don't know, I'm waiting.
Okay. Well, we have, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No minutes at this point?
No minutes.
How about liaison reports?
25 grand to Diamond Development.
What's that?
25,000 to Diamond Development.
What 25,000? In the county.
The return of the surety.
They, we had taken sureties, so that they, they didn't exactly finish the drainage basin before they got a building permit, so we took surety, and the drainage basin looks fantastic down there. I mean, the grass is so green.
Where is that? On Hatherley, yeah.
105 Hatherley Road.
It's the one that's the, was it Plan Unit Development, or what's?
That's residential compound development.
Okay, yes.
We still have surety, we still have surety for the top coat and everything.
Okay.
And trees, but that basin looks really very good.
Okay. Do we normally, is there normally a report that releases that kind of thing? Or is it just a, was it just a request by the developer?
The developer requested it.
Okay.
You didn't require any surety for the development, but when they asked for building permit prior to, you know, the drainage basin done, Laura asked for surety, and so they, they gave it.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? How about liaison reports?
EDC presented to the selectmen what they wanted to do in terms of parking, mapping. It's a couple of other things. Parking. The parking has to do with the Appleton Farm, the Damon property, and two other properties. And it's 500-plus thousand dollars. And there was a little problem with one of the selectmen, because he, what we did, or what CPC did, was take 300 and 350,000 and put it back into open space. And then, we did the 350 plus 200 and some odd to make it up, because the access to Appleton Farm is, has a wetlands crossing, and we have to build a road. And that is expensive. So ultimately, what had come forward was finally agreed upon by the selectmen. And we just received an application for 1 Elm Street, and we don't know where that is. As far as EDC is concerned, Ted's coming in tonight, we've, so that's going ahead. So he'll be here tonight, okay?
Since you mentioned the selectmen earlier, has Ted presented to the selectmen the idea of the zoning changes yet? Just as like, like he did for the meeting that I saw on TV, like for you guys?
I don't know. We can ask him tonight?
Okay.
Any other reports there? Planning, development reports?
You had deferred your liaison list.
Oh, yeah, we should do that.
It was never timed, and so.
Now that we got everybody here, I think that's what we were waiting for.
And there's time.
Do you have the list?
Here's the list. I didn't have a lot of time today, so I didn't have any copies, but perhaps you want to decide what, who wants to do what?
Yep. Does everybody have this list?
I say, you sent it out, but do you remember exactly when you sent it?
I have it.
I know you sent it.
I did send it.
Do you remember kind of roughly when you sent it?
It was, I have one from May 26.
Probably in September. Yeah, probably I sent it last Friday.
Yours is revised, then.
Last Friday.
Yeah, revised, I've got one.
Yeah, that's the right one.
Okay.
So, let me just, let's go down. I have, Ann has the Board of Selectmen liaison. You still good with doing that?
Of course, best show in town.
I have Richard. Well, let me just, you know what, let's go, who has? So I have Ann for Board of Selectmen, CPC, EDC, and Water Resources.
Okay.
Does that imply you'd give that one up?
In a heartbeat. There were only so many days in the week.
Anybody want to take that?
I wouldn't mind doing Water.
Okay, so what about Ben on Water Resources? Okay, and then, for Richard, I have you at Board of Health.
Yeah, that's a, let's get you one, but continue.
Design Review Committee.
There was Public Facilities.
Hysterical.
Oh, historical, yep.
Yeah, historical.
Yep, that's good.
South Shore Coalition. Public Building Commission.
Yep.
That's what I had.
I think it was good for everything except the Health. Just if someone else wanted to do Health. I know. Patricia, would you like that?
Patricia? Okay. So let Pat do that one. And then Bill, I have you on the Disabilities. And the Public Facilities Master Plan. Street Acceptance and Traffic Rules. And then as an alternate on Water Resources Committee. And I have you as, on the Waterways Commission.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, no, I have Ann on ZBA. I missed that one. Is it down at the end? So you want to give that one up? Because I actually have Ben on that one, too.
Leave Ben.
Yeah, I don't mind.
Because they meet every Thursday, every third Thursday, and that's when we meet, so I don't know how we can pull that off.
Yeah, well, sometimes we won't be there.
There you go.
Who's that?
Tony, Board of Appeals.
Tony, Board of Appeals, this is the third.
Third Thursday.
Third Thursday. So usually it should be in between.
We're usually two and four.
Oh, we're two and four, okay.
We're two and four, but we've been having a lot of meetings the third Thursday, and next month, actually, ZBA is the third Wednesday.
Okay.
Just a one-time thing. One-time thing.
I'll try to get there, okay?
Okay. So I got you and Ben on that one. And then Conservation Commission, every other one. I really can't do that, that was on my list, so anybody want to take CONCOM?
I'll take Conservation.
Pat? Okay. I don't know if we've got any other, sort of, that's it, right?
It would appear to be.
Okay, so I've added, the only changes I made, I had Pat on the Board of Health and CONCOM, and I added Ben to Water Resources Committee. Took you off, Ann.
Thank you.
Does that work for everybody? All right, that's our list.
Yeah.
Did you have anything? Karen?
So the, the letter on the Riverway went out this week, so I think I sent everybody a copy of that.
Yeah.
I've been working diligently on subsidized housing inventory. Hopefully, in the next week, we'll be able to get paperwork in to submit for 14 more units.
How high will that take us as a town? What's our percentage?
Right now, we're at about four, a little over 4.33, 4.43 we're at.
So it doesn't do much.
So it doesn't.
Doesn't move the needle much.
It doesn't move the needle much, but any bit, any bit helps.
Okay.
Design Review Committee is meeting this week on the 1st for Toll Brothers.
Richard, will you be there?
Yes, I will.
They intend to bring in a bunch of, actually, material samples for this meeting.
There were some interesting things that we got on those case studies that showed different kinds of developments and stuff throughout Massachusetts, and even Rhode Island, it looked like. So you might want to look at those.
Sent to us?
Yeah. Well, it was in that Dropbox link, if you got the Dropbox.
Yeah, okay.
There's a bunch of, there's like eight different case studies in there. Go ahead.
And so we just remain very, very busy in the office, you know, with a lot of, a lot of work on 90 and Vinyl, Toll Brothers, and, you know, potential 40Bs. And we'll be interviewing for an assistant, not this week, but the week after.
And any, any progress on the master plan? I think the last time we talked, Brad was going to do some internal conversations, but I don't know where we are on that.
I don't think, I mean, I think he's been a little inundated.
Yeah.
With, with everything else.
Oh, it's not really a liaison report, but I did drive by Blanchard Farm, and the.
Today?
It was a couple of days ago, so I don't think anything's changed in two days, but two days ago.
I thought you were going to give a rain report.
No, 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 not that. But I did want to say that the, the house in question, I always forget the number, where they, there was the headlights, and they, they agreed to put the fence up.
Yeah.
They already had the grasses. The fence is up, and it looks quite nice, I think.
Good.
So.
You didn't happen to see a car come down and see?
Well, you know, I don't want to get into, I can understand, you know, coming around the corner, it's not going to block all light, there's, you know, you definitely can, because you're going around that cul-de-sac, right?
Yeah.
To cut, to pull into the driveway. So you're never going to block all the light.
You can't.
But, I thought it was a very good faith effort by the neighbor to put that fence up, and it looks very nice.
Okay. A couple of other things. We had a meeting that Ann and I were at about 40R, and sort of whether we should pursue 40R, and I think we ran across the same sort of fundamental issue, which was infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
Yeah. There is a, there seems to be a consensus, we had a couple members from the Board of Selectmen there, seems to be a consensus that we need to get the infrastructure analysis piece sort of front and center, get it done, you know, do a comprehensive analysis in a way that we can repeat it for new developments and that kind of stuff. So I understand that there, the Board of Selectmen's sort of pursuing that in terms of, you know, how do we fund something like that for, for DPW, basically?
I think they said it's going on the capital plan.
Yeah. Well, it was a little iffy, because the capital plan was due that day, and it wasn't, I wasn't sure whether, I'm assuming they got it on the capital plan, but.
They can have a placeholder for it. They're also looking into, or will be looking into, Mass Works Grants, which is a lot of money. They're also looking into, or will be looking into, MassWorks grants, which is a lot of money, if we can, whatever.
Yes, it was sort of the pivot from 40R to say, because 40R provides like $3,000 per unit when they're built, plus an upfront sort of, um, you know, payment, it's like $100,000 or $150,000. But the real issue is that if we need infrastructure upgrades and, and those kinds of things, we need a lot more money than that. And, um, Brad had brought up the, the point, or maybe it was, um, who's our guy doing the, Ted brought up that MassWorks might be a place to go. And, um, because they provide infrastructure, infrastructure funding to sort of shovel-ready municipal projects. And so, you know, I think the idea is we would try to pursue that in conjunction with the, you know, not only the, the zoning, but the, the Drew Development, um, over at Green Bush, and see if there's, you know, more available money on the table. I did look it up after we left, and they have a window for grant applications. It's like July through August or something like that, so we've already missed this year, so it would be next year would be the window of opportunity. But they did, did put some emphasis on transit-oriented development, so, you know, that would be good. But they tended to, last year's focus tended to be gateway cities and, um, transit-oriented development with, um, a connection to jobs. So that's, those were their priorities when they started looking at all the applications. So, um, you know, it would be great if we could get, you know, really get some additional capital in for the municipal side of the infrastructure equation, you know?
Yeah, I think just talking to people casually, there's a disconnect because they don't understand, like, there's a total water ban on outside watering in October, yet we're permitting new construction going forward. And there, there's a, people's perception is like, how can that be? Which is hard to explain sometimes.
Well, fundamentally, a good question.
Yeah.
And, and it is a challenge, and it's one of the things we talked about, which was that, that part of what we need to do is develop a, a more detailed sort of rigorous approach to how we do analysis of capacity. Because we tended, we tended to do it just year to year, as opposed to look at the performance of the system across the year, and really look at the summer performance. Because that's where everything goes. You know, that's where all the pressure comes from, right, is in the summertime, so... And that's, that's what we were talking about with sort of the comprehensive review, right, is, is to review the whole system and then develop a methodology so that you have a consistent way of evaluating, you know, new capacity requests essentially. Which I think would be good, if we can get there, you know?
That's great. Were there, was there any Selectmen representation at this meeting that the two of you had?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Yeah, two, Mora and Karen were both there.
Excellent, okay, good.
And...
We had another one today too.
Yeah, the second one, you want to fill people in on that one?
We had, um, a meeting with Toll, Kevin Cafferty was there, Jeff Delise, Orinberger, Brad, Karen, Steve, and myself, and John Danahue came in late, Karen Canfield was there. All about, again, the infrastructure. And Toll has been, has been granted the water and the sewer hookups. Actually, it was done just about two years ago.
Right.
So it is very difficult to hold them accountable for what's, what we're doing going forward. I had some questions about what the hookups were, but I, apparently with the Selectmen, it's a done deal. They're going to loop the water, they're going to do, answer a lot of different questions, so...
I think it, it fell out of the, the memo DPW sent last time to, to Toll Brothers, and I think you guys all have a copy of it. And it talked about some, uh, additional analysis they wanted for both the water and the sewer systems with respect to connecting to both of those systems. And it was more focused on the physical connection and the impact sort of around, you know, the development. But I think we were able to sort of broaden it to say, let's make sure we look at it from a, you know, a whole system perspective anyway, and what the impact that that has on, on, particularly on the sewer side, because there's two or three areas that are identified as expansion areas, and there's actually capacity reserved for those. And, you know, one of the things I've found is that we're apparently right now really at our capacity right now for sewer. At or maybe slightly above it.
But we're also doing, redoing pipes, um, down in, on Cedar Point for INI that hopefully will save a lot of infiltration. It, it's, it's an ongoing issue, and they just rehabbed the plant, or a pumping station, was, that's in Sandhills too, I think.
Yeah, that was the Sandhills Pumping Station.
Right, $800,000 that Toll is going to hook in through Sixth and...
Seventh.
Seventh. And it'll come down Langley and go in. It's, um, and they'll go right into a twenty, through the pump station into a 24-inch pipe off to the sewer treatment plant. As far as water is concerned, they're going to put in as much low-flow, green, what have you. We, we talked about that a little bit as well.
I think they're going to bring that up at our next meeting, because remember, we brought it up the last...
Yeah, about like, how are you going to landscape and, and water all this? They basically said it was going to be an onsite well, but...
Well, they're still saying that. I, I think the broader question is what kind of water conservation have you incorporated into the design, which included like low-flow fixtures and, and stuff like that, and I don't think they, it sounded like just from our conversation, they weren't quite prepared to answer it there, but they're coming it in, you know, because they're planning to, as a base case, start with low flow fixtures, or fixtures that are qualified to a particular water saver standard anyway, so... I guess we'll hear from them when they come in. So that's, I think that's everything that's going on.
Do you want to sign the A and R now then?
Yeah, we can take five minutes, go off the record.
He's in ICU, he gave a board transmission.
These are the, you just need three of these, right? You need four, you need three? Doesn't matter what pen I sign with. Remember the days when we actually used to draft on Mylar? That was a long time ago.
Well, it's funny, we have a product called Sticky. I have to explain it all the time, because we named it that because it's like a sticky back, you know, where you used to draw on Mylar, and then you'd stick the detail on the paper and run it through the print machine.
Yeah.
But I say to people, I give them, "Why do you call this product Sticky?" And you sound like, "Oh, okay, I got to explain it to you."
I, I actually learned to draw that with ink, right, on Mylar.
Yeah, we had rapidographs.
That was a long time ago.
The days before... The days before...
Yeah, we still had to get to the job site via horse and bungee. Have you got everybody here for, uh, Ninety and Vinyl? Okay. Let's go back on the record then. This is the continuation of public hearing for the Flexible Open Space Definitive Subdivision Plan for Ninety and Vinyl.
Good evening. Uh, Phil Orinberger, I'm here with Paul Maravito and Greg Pansy, and Jeff Delise, and, and I'm also here with Paul Shaw. And I'll let Paul give a presentation, but one of the things is, addressing some of the concerns the board had last time, Paul worked to reconfigure the subdivision, so aesthetically and otherwise, trying to get, trying to get this so, so the lots and the houses weren't behind each other. So Paul, were you, Charles, what we got here?
What we did was to, um, reconfigure the lot line around Lot 12, all the way up to Lot 6. We actually pulled these over. That, that allowed us to open these lots and remove the houses out in front there. So these have a longer driveway. There are, uh, this, these two houses would be smaller than, um, overall lift compared to these, the same square footage, but you can see that there's, there's no houses in front of these now.
And what's, what are the orange lines?
Well, this is the, um, this is the wetland, and this is a hundred-foot buffer.
Gotcha.
We may want to pull these forward 15 to 20 feet to get it out of the hundred-foot buffer, you know, for grading or ready art. If we have to go into that, we, we could do that, but if we pull them forward, we'll do, we could avoid a, a final contamination.
So did the earlier plan, it had lot, other access off of Ninety and Vinyl? Or was it always that way, or am I thinking of a different?
Well, Ninety and Vinyl.
Yeah, there's an existing gravel driveway that comes up, that's kind of like right in front of the leaching field, that's existing driveway to the house.
Okay.
Yeah, this driveway comes up here, and you can see the circular drive in front of the house here, it's right here, comes right up like this.
I think what you might be thinking of is the conventional plan had a lot that was off of Ninety and Vinyl, right? Like, then the conventional plan, there was like...
Oh, was it, was that the conventional plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, too many plans going. Yep. Gotcha. So nothing, the, 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 Leaching Field's pretty much in the same place, all that's the same, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I have to say, I like that layout better.
So do I.
Yeah, when I, well, I printed, it's the same plan, I printed out from the email. When I first saw the email, that's the first thing I said is, oh, this is so much better. So, congratulations. Thank you. I, I did a question about the, just quickly about the cul-de-sac, and I don't know the regulations. Do we have any limit to the number of driveways off a cul-de-sac? Because I noticed now there's quite a few where they would have been the same.
Under the bylaw, it says, common driveways, you're not supposed to have a common driveway off the cul-de-sac.
That's right.
So that, under the common driveway special permit provision.
Yeah, so the, the second... The second cul, the, the first cul-de-sac, you hit the one on the right there. Looks like two of those driveways are just as you enter that short little stub road then, huh? Is that what, is that what I'm seeing there? And then there's three off the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, that's what it looks like, yep.
Yeah, there's a, there's a driveway here.
Gotcha.
This is the lot with the historic home on it.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's one, two, three driveways off the end of the cul-de-sac.
By the way, you, I, since you brought up the house, I know you, you planned on moving it, do you, do you have a location to a specific site you're going to move that to?
That's that lot, right?
That's right there.
The, the plan right now, Rich, is to, is to remove the back section, which they got approval for, because this is the existing kitchen, which sits on a wood floor in the main bite of the house. What they'll do is to, um, extricate the hole for the foundation, we're going to move this from here to here.
Existing conditions, it's in the middle of the road right now?
Right, I was going to say, okay, so that, but that would be lot number 16, is what you're saying? That was my question, yeah.
Okay. Any, any questions, anybody? Okay. I think we had some follow-up feedback, um, on the stormwater design, and... Let me just find my notes here. Yeah, I can't find them. Do you want to walk us through the stormwater design?
Sure.
At least your review of it?
Um, as far as review of the, Peter Palmeri from Royal Engineering...
Yeah, I'm sorry, Peter, I should have...
As far as the stormwater, we had reviewed the original plans, submitted a report to the planning board, had generated a revised set of plans, and then on October 17th, we submitted another report to the, to the planning board. A lot of our comments...
Was it looking at this layout?
No, I haven't seen that layout.
Oh, you haven't seen this layout?
I should, I should correct myself. I did see the layout, um, I was faxed a, a copy of the, just the layout sheet earlier today.
Okay.
Um, it does seem to have achieved what the planning board was interested in.
Yeah.
I didn't receive anything beyond that, but, um, going back to the drainage system, which I suspect is very similar to what the plan I reviewed was. I actually spoke to Greg earlier today, and, um, he said some of the revisions we had suggested in our, um, October 17th letter were going to be made, um, and I think that the design complies with stormwater management policy. They did, one of the major things that I had asked, um, to be done, I, I don't think it shows on this plan, but, um, there was a stormwater detention basin located in this area of Townsend Road, be it down here. I had suggested, recommended that they move the element to that basin as far away from the abutters as they could. They were meeting the flow, um, post-development, pre-development criteria, but, um, I just thought it would make sense to try to get it as far away as, as we could, and they did that. Subsequent to that, I recommended a level spreader instead of a point source discharge. If this wetlands was not here, I would have suggested that they bring it all over the property line, but, um, they got it as close to the wetlands as they could. One of the other comments I had made was relevant to basement elevations. And talking to Greg earlier today, I think that the next set of plans the planning board sees is going to actually address that.
Okay.
I think most of my drainage comments were, were satisfactorily addressed, again, with the exception of adding the level spreaders, and I haven't seen that yet.
So would it, um, would it make sense to sort of hold off any other discussion on this till we have a revised, I'm assuming a revised, that's coming soon?
Um, I think, I think the, in general terms, the stormwater, um, providing a level spreader is pretty straightforward.
Okay.
I'm satisfied. There's a couple of minor things that I think should be, um, added to the plan. For example, I think the board might want to consider, this isn't stormwater, but, um, having the open space boundary. Having concrete bounds to clearly define the open space. They did ask for a waiver on a landscape architect, the board needs to decide that. They did, um, the rules and rights require a specific erosion sedimentation control plan. They did, the rules and rights require a specific erosion sedimentation control plan. They've asked that that be included in a notice of intent and SWIP that they will be preparing once prior to construction. I don't know if the board thought that should be submitted before construction. That's up to the board.
Is there?
The only other thing I was suggesting is that it's good to know the quantity of film being brought on site. I think because of the groundwater issues that, not issues, the high groundwater, that the site's going to be somewhat elevated, and I think it would be good to know how much material is going on site. Other than that, I'm satisfied.
Okay. And I assume there's, Greg's got a revised version coming based on this?
Yes. I guess the question, based on what Peter just said, if it makes sense to talk about what the board wants for that so that we can implement it, because we don't want to, if there's things like the things that we've asked for, if we could discuss them, there's things the board feels that you need, I'd rather we get those done, get them into you so at the next meeting, we say, okay, we've done one through eight, but nine and 10, I think we better do them. So I think that might be productive if we could talk about what the board wants.
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to do that. I was just really asking about a revised stormwater.
Yeah, absolutely.
Design, it's coming.
Yeah, because what Peter just said is Greg's already implementing that, and based on the different lot configuration, I think it's relatively minor stormwater change, isn't it, Greg?
It is. It's some adjustment to grades. But the overall flow patterns, I don't see changing. I don't really see the basins being enlarged. If it is, it would be very minimal.
Well, you have the benefit of Peter's sort of input, so I assume you'll try to integrate that. One thing you just mentioned, just to put a pin in it somewhere, is the elevation of grades, and we ran into this problem over Blanchard Farms, right, is that you have the potential to shine headlights into the abutting houses. So you should probably take a look at that and figure out how you're going to try to manage that. And I don't, I don't know that that's a stormwater issue, it's just a development issue.
Well, I don't see the elevations of the road changing. It was, it's basically in the area.
No, no, I'm not talking about the, I'm just saying, if the elevations are higher here for this development, and people are driving back into those back houses, just want to avoid the headlight problem.
Yeah. One thing you can see there is that I think those are in-loaded garages. All these garages are front entrance there. So in other words, you can just see by the way it's laid out that there's buildings in front of all the driveways.
So be very careful if somebody wants a side-loaded driveway, because that's how we got into the problem at Blanchard Farms.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
On the stormwater and the road configuration? And I can't remember, so I apologize. Are we proposing a granite curb the entire way, or just around like the cul-de-sac? And if so, would that, if there was a granite curb the entire way, would that impact stormwater in terms of like how it's running down the street? How, I guess, so my question is, how is that working right now? And the reason I bring that up is just because we had that visit with the DPW where they were requesting granite curbs going forward in new developments, so.
Rich, what we proposed was a Cape Cod berm. The only place you had a granite curb is at the ready eye here, where we normally put them, and the rest of it would be a Cape Cod berm. Here's a four-foot grass strip, and then there's a five-foot sidewalk. So, and this road is narrow, you know, on purpose, just having, I think the road's twenty feet wide with a one-foot berm, and then you got your grass strip and then you have the sidewalk. But by keeping it twenty feet, that's the minimum what the fire department wants. It also tends to slow down the vehicles going up and down the roadway, but we did ask for a waiver for the vertical granite curbing and try to let it to the roadway on both sides.
Do we have, do we have input from the DPW?
Evangeline Drive, that same waiver was granted, so you can see what.
Well, Evangeline Drive was the problem.
It's a problem?
That's from our DPW, yes.
Problem.
With plowing is, I mean, I know that, that's different, because I believe Evangeline was, is a public way, right? It was voted public or not?
I don't know.
Yes.
I believe it was. And so that was the issue, because then situates plowing it. Now, I know in this particular case, you're not going for public. Is that correct? Like, you don't, maybe let's step back. Would the roads, do you envision that this road would ever be a public road?
I don't know the answer to that question at this point.
What was the problem, Rich, with the plows hitting the curbs?
Yeah. Kevin said it was too.
Granite curbs easier to plow against.
He said it was too narrow, and he recommended going forward on new developments that we not give the waiver of the granite curbing, or not to do the granite curbing.
But this one, we've got, they're looking for three waivers, and I think you've got to look at them together. One is the road length, it's seven hundred and some odd feet. The second is the road width, which is twenty to twenty-four. And the third is the Cape Cod berm.
Right.
And I guess I could build an argument that sits there and says, with the longer street and the narrower roadway, you're better off with Cape Cod berm, because that way there, if there's any restrictions, you can move to the side without going over a granite curb.
As long as this remains a private road, right?
The traffic flow's the same whether it's private or public?
Huh?
I said the traffic flow on that road.
Yeah, but then we don't have the plowing obligation, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Yeah, no, I see.
I have a question. The sidewalk in front of this property is incredibly narrow. Is there any thought, because this goes right to Havley School, and a question was raised by a citizen, that it, Havley Road, not Havley, An Vinyl is not the widest road in the world. Is there any potential of making this sidewalk wider?
Is there, and I don't know this, and I shouldn't, so there's an existing sidewalk in front of the property, right?
Yes, and it's very narrow. I think it's something that you might want to take a look at, because safe streets to school, whatever, the federal government gave money to build a sidewalk down Hollitt Street, so that there are a lot of children that are walking to school, and the concern was, because that sidewalk is so narrow, that the school buses, when they leave, they're right close to the sidewalk. So if we could make it a little bit deeper, I think you have the ability to do that. It's something I'd like you to take a look at, if at all possible.
One of the issues you're going to get is you see the wetland along the, along the...
I see it.
Eastally.
Yep.
But that's, it's an isolated wetland?
Now, right now.
So can we, we didn't quite get an answer to the question, is this a private way or public, or are you intending it to be a public way?
You're always, but that's, that's up to the, that's up to the, you know, if the town will accept it as a public way, then I guess you always have a public way. So what you're saying is that.
What is, what's the intent, though? What's your intent? I mean, because if you want it to be a public way, then.
Yeah, yeah, so the intent is you do like it to be a public way, so I guess that feeds into the query then, if the DPW.
Right.
If it's a private way, the waiver is more, in your minds, is more appropriate than if it's going to be a public way? Is that basically what you're coming?
Well, I think Bill's right in terms of we have to look at all of the components together.
Together, right.
Right? And maybe even the component of the sidewalk down below, in terms of.
Can I ask a question with the sidewalk here? So what you're talking about is, is basically if it's, if it's two feet wide, you make it four feet wide or whatever it is, right?
Yes.
In other words, to add to the asphalt surface.
Yes.
In front of Curtis's, it's three and a half feet wide.
In front of our property.
Yeah, in front of Curtis's houses, I measured today, it's three and a half feet wide, and it's full leaves and stuff.
Okay, it's three and a half feet wide? And I don't know my own ignorance, how.
You can take it to five if you want it.
Yeah, yeah, how wide are they usually? Four feet of?
Five.
Five, I think the new, yeah, the new expanded ones they're doing, like Countryway and all that, they're all five feet.
I wouldn't ask you to go all the way down to Hollitt Street, but just basically in front of.
In front of our property?
In front of your property.
And maybe we could get DPW to finish it off.
You can only hope.
CPC.
That's an idea.
Got to finish Countryway first.
Let me, go ahead, Bill, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I've been on street acceptance for most of my adult life, and the thinking right now is that they probably wouldn't accept a twenty-foot road.
Yes, if you wanted petition it for acceptance, then you'd probably want a twenty-four-foot road, right?
What about the subdivision standards and twenty-four feet?
So, and so Evangeline Drive is a public road? I didn't know that.
Yeah, it is.
It is?
And the town administrator was really, really upset that it was only, what, eighteen or twenty feet wide?
Twenty, I think.
Twenty.
Wasn't it twenty?
And she said.
Evangeline.
I think it's twenty.
Yeah.
And she was just really upset with the plow.
Because I just know on a couple prior flexible open space, they weren't public roads.
No, and if that's kind of where you want to go, if you're comfortable with that, you know, I think that was the question, is that, so if somebody wants to petition to make this a public way, you know, the DPW wants a twenty-four-foot wide road, not a twenty-foot wide road.
Right, and that kind of.
And then, so then you have to go out there and.
Yes, that flies against the concept of a flexible open space, because we're trying to minimize pay.
Right.
May I ask a question? Is the roadway designed right now, where it's designed, would it handle the drainage for a twenty-four-foot wide road?
Yes, it will. The first, the middle was, it was based on a, it was a twenty-four-foot wide road with a twenty, with a waiver request for twenty. And the reason why I did that is so that the drainage would be designed for a twenty-four-foot wide road in case the situation cropped out.
I tend to agree, if it's, if it's skinnier, if it's a twenty-foot road, then it seems like the granite curbs become an obstacle more than anything else, right?
Yeah.
I personally, like visually, I like the look of the granite curb much better, and I like the fact that Kevin was really advocating for them. So I'd be advocating for them, but I would understand or be amenable to what the board feels.
Well, do you feel like the road that narrow, that, what I would worry about is like people coming and parking, and you've got a narrow road, like on a Cape Cod berm, you can kind of pull up a little bit, you know?
I think it's one or the other.
Yeah.
It's a twenty-four-foot road with a granite curb, or it's a smaller, narrower road with the Cape Cod berm.
One of the big drawbacks at Evangeline that I saw was the placement of the mailbox. The mailbox was placed between the roadway and, I think, their sidewalk, so that there was no wiggle room for the plow to push the snow. So if you're going to put in a mail thing, it needs to be put in such a way that it does not interfere with plowing.
It sort of flies in the face of what the post office asks for, though.
Yeah, well.
Because they want it right there so they can pull up to.
I've got a Cape Cod berm in front of my house. I've got a Cape Cod berm, narrow grass, and then I've got a sidewalk.
Were we just looking at, we'll look at, yes, widening along the, so let's look at this, Paul's just trying to figure out how close that stone wall is. Pat, did you see how close the stone wall looked to the pavement when they're out there?
A couple feet.
So you, so you got, so you got some room?
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't know if it was like.
No, it's larger.
Yeah, so you probably got a foot, a couple feet between there, okay.
Karen, did we get anything from DPW?
No, that, we have comments from DPW, but not on the road width. I can tell you that we have been having calls on another subdivision, people concerned because there was waivers, and now they're hoping to go in front of street acceptance and.
Yeah, I mean, that's the classic catch twenty-two.
Will the waivers hurt them with the narrower road and not having the granite curb?
I mean, out from personal experience, that happened to us, too. I think all the neighbors up in Norley Farm, we were told, oh, it'll always be a public road, and then when we met, Bill shot it down right away.
Good job, Bill.
No, no, because, again, it met subdivision.
Look at the granite curb.
No, no. It met the, what is it, the composite, the road conditions of a public road, but it didn't meet the radius, and it didn't meet the width, and it didn't have granite, I mean, there were a lot of other things, a lot of waivers.
Yeah.
So I think people don't always understand that when they live in a neighborhood.
People don't, they're not being told that when they move into these neighborhoods.
Correct.
They're being told that it's going to be a public road, and then when they find out that it's potentially not going to be able to, they, they get very upset. What, a couple of the other things that you should consider, I think Bill is absolutely right, you know, the road length, the width, and the curb all go together. Perhaps you want to run down the whole list of waivers tonight and determine, just on a straw vote, you know, to give the applicant some direction, which way you're going to be leaning. I mean, if you agree that the road length is okay, just so that they can proceed to be doing redesign. I think you also need to decide if this layout is acceptable to you, is the open space acceptable to you. There's a comment from the Board of Health that there needs to be some redesign of the soil absorption, the septic field, that may be growing, so.
Oh, is that right? I guess I missed that one. What, what in particular? What's, what's the problem?
She just told me verbally that it may need to be, be growing.
Oh, so they haven't put anything in writing yet?
The Board of Health has provided comments to the applicant, is what her comment to me was. The Board also needs to decide if there should be any traffic data submitted. Right now, you basically have generic traffic data, and under the subdivision rules and regulations, you are entitled to ask for traffic data if you feel you need it. And I would recommend that you do ask for some, because you want to know site distances, you want to make sure your turning radii are okay. Everything in section six point three, point four, point five, peak number of trips.
Yeah, because this is, the school trips are going to be through here.
Just analysis of the geometry to make sure that you are approving something that's safe, level of service. I think all these things should be, at least in some form, given to, direction given to the applicant tonight, so that when they go back and do some redesign, hopefully it's just one more planned revision.
Right. Well, I think that's, that's appropriate. I was sort of prepared to walk through what we had on the stormwater. I didn't have these other outline issues yet, but happy to address those as well. Why don't we get through what we have on the stormwater and then keep moving on?
Certainly.
Okay? Because it looks to me on the stormwater, you've asked for a waiver for a landscape plan. Do you want to?
And speaking kind of on the same line of the, with the stormwater and the road, are there catch basins at any location, like, or engineered? Like, I don't see them on this plan, but I don't necessarily think that they would be. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's just the.
That's just the site layout right there.
So you have a revised plan that shows this layout with the catch basins and the road layout, basically?
No, the purpose tonight, we have to show you this.
Okay.
See if the board agrees with the layout. Once you do that, we have to go back and we have to, we have to do some regrading. We've got to change some of the storm drainage here.
Okay.
The concept will be the same, but you know, these, these lot lines have all moved.
Right.
So the grading's going to change, the location of some of the underground utilities are going to change, so. Now, once you move the ladder, there's quite a bit of work to do.
So let's, let's try to address the things we can, and you know, first thing is the layout itself, you know, we ought to get a sense whether anybody has any concerns about this or not?
No.
No? Bill?
I'm sorry, say it again.
Are you okay with the layout? I mean, obviously, the one issue is the length of the road, right? But from, from a redesign point of view, I guess I would say I think you've done a good job in sort of addressing the issue that we raised, so, you know, in that regard, I would say, I would, I won't speak for everybody, but I think, is everybody okay with it?
Yeah, even for me, like, I was concerned about the density, you know, the number, it's the sixteen lots, and this seems to be much less, you know, it sounds weird to say dense, because it's the same density, but it just seems the layout, when you look at it, appears much less like they're on top of each other, which is really nice. So for me, it really alleviated a little bit of the concern I had about the number of lots, so I think it's a really nice layout.
I have a couple of comments on the, on the layout. I do like.
I, I do like the, the configuration better. One question I had is, and I might be, have a different view of other members on this board, is, um, how close are we to kind of maximizing the density? So in the spirit of the open space development plan, um, how much tighter in could we actually get these lots to maximize more open space and minimize lot disturbance? I frankly don't matter, mind if some of the lots get tighter together to maximize, um, that.
We, uh, we already exceed the amount of open space required?
No, I, I under, I understand that completely. My question is more, uh, based on just design principles. How much tighter could we make things, um, you know, that's possible, given setbacks and the size of the house, to still make a marketable product?
You, you can make it, but this is kind of the issue which, which Peter mentioned a minute ago. If you're, if you're looking for demarcation of your open space, you want to give the people some backyards that they can use here. And so theoretically, on the right-hand side, you can move that all in along the right-hand line there. But as a practical matter, there's prob, and again, I'm, I'm being 100% frank on how this works. I'm saying it's like, yeah, you can have, you can have some open space, and we can do some temporary disturbance grading to get into that, and then to make it open space and all this. But if you wanted open space in the traditional sense of open space, that it's undisturbed, then that, you know, there has to be some grading based on elevations between the houses. So what I'm saying, on the right-hand side, you can see all those lots, those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lots are large lots. So you probably could have some more of that be of the open space, couldn't you, Paul?
You get lawn creep.
I'm sorry, means the lots on the right?
Yes.
Get what?
Yeah.
Lawn creep.
Lawn creep?
Creep with a C. What happens is you've got so much land, and then you want a little bit more, and then you, you kind of go into the, the open space, and you knock down a tree, you take two trees down.
Yeah, so I-
Rub it out in your lawn, just gradually, this creeps, it gets bigger and bigger.
Yeah, so I understand what Peter's comment was, you want some type of demarcation. So what I'm saying is if there's a demarcation, then I think it's a little more problematic. If there isn't demarcation, but I understand Bill's point, you know, because that's, you know.
We've asked for demarcation, either in plantings or markers.
Yeah.
Monuments, but I think it makes a certain amount of sense to do it, because that way it shows you right where the open space is.
Right.
Which is pretty critical, depending on who owns it. Who's going to be responsible for maintaining the open space.
Correct.
So it, you know, just going to maybe to Ben's point, if I could build on that a moment. And what you said, Bill, is that, um, it looks like where the 100-foot buffer line is, that potentially could be, in other words, you could move the boundaries in or move the homes in a little to create more open space there and sort of, I, I, I would be afraid of what Bill just said about, um, lawn creep into the buffer.
No, we, we can pull these forward. This is only about 25 or 30 feet for a 100-foot buffer.
Yeah.
In the plan, we're not to go into the 100-foot buffer with any, uh, disturbance.
And then we could use that as a demarcation line or something?
More or less, yeah.
How much open space do we have now?
Yeah, 78, 78 or 80%, I think. We're probably at 76%. I was just looking at the numbers.
How much is it?
Yeah, let me check that.
32%, 32.4%? That's a square footage ratio. So 218,000 square feet.
30% open space. We have 33.6%. But, um-
And what's the intention with the areas that are not part of the lot boundaries? Will they remain undisturbed, or do you have to disturb them?
No, these, these areas in here would all stay wooded. This and all stay wooded. There's some basins in here, but some of these basins will have some trees on them. This is a wooded area. There'll be vegetation in here. You've got a basin here, this will stay vegetation. That's all I would name vegetated. Everything around the leach area. This is in an open field right now. This is vegetated in here, this will stay. When they construct this, they'll, they'll come off, they'll come in from the existing driveway, and just work on it here, and they can work from here, and this will be vegetated as well.
Say, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, so, um, it's not the case that you have to, I understood you were bringing a lot of fill-in, right? So do you have to grade down to the back property lines? Or is where the lot lines are, that's where you meet existing grade?
No, we, we won't be disturbing anything in here. The, the only disturbance would be for the stormwater basin, where they have a berm around them.
Okay, so the, so the lot lines are at existing grade, then?
Yes.
The back lot lines around the open space?
Yes. Most of the fill is for the roadway, and then into, built up around the house. That's pretty much it.
I thought there was fill all the way over to the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, always fill over here, used for the berms for the basins.
Well, I thought that there was, there would still be filling to the cul-de-sac that goes to the right. Where's cul-de-sac?
Up in here?
Down below.
Oh, this one here?
Yeah. Because I thought you were filling up into there. Because there's more fill, I think you've seen it mentioned it, I think there's more fill.
No, that, that cul-de-sac right now, the proposed elevation, proposed elevation of this is about a foot to 18 inches above the existing ground. The contour going through here is a 36-foot contour, and the existing grade here is 35. This, this is fairly level in this area of the property. This is where the house are, the sheds, it's pretty level up there.
Paul, is it possible for you just to sketch on the plan, just an approximate sketch, where the drainage basins are, so that the board can actually see where the drainage basins are on this layout plan?
Yeah, let me show you.
Just approximate, you know?
Each plan has, you have the same, um, rear lot line. For the most part, I'll show where the basins are. This is lot nine now.
Nice stuff.
The basins in back of these two houses, it's a very small base.
Turn that 90 degrees, would you? Just turn it sideways, so it's the same orientation. If, if you could. Yeah. Well, you can put it straight up.
This basin sits, sits right in this pocket here. And you can see the shape of it. It's sitting right in here. We haven't changed that.
Okay.
And there's two basins back here in the woods.
And then there's one down in front?
And there's one down in front. Down here.
And, um, just, just hold that up for a second, Paul. So the pink line, that's the wetlands?
Yeah, this, this is a wetland line.
So where's that set, where's that offset line on that drawing?
On this drawing?
Yeah.
It's right here.
Oh, okay, so it's roughly the same spot, then?
Yeah.
On the lots?
Yeah, we still have the houses on this side of this.
Okay.
That 100-foot line.
Well, I would say if you could, if you could do some work to move that right lot line in, just increase. I mean, it looks like most of the open space is going to be essentially taken by the stormwater system. Doesn't it?
Um, some of it is.
A lot of it is.
No, we still have all of this in here. This will end up being a field, if you will, to the top of this. This will be, um, this will be loomed and seeded. It's about, that's close to an acre, it's about 200 by 200. That'll be loomed and seeded, that'll look like open space. And this will be wooded in here, even in the area of the basins, which is a, a perfect buffer for these homes. And there'll be woods up in here. The, uh, uh, backyards of these houses, they're not big, this is only about 30 feet. You'll have lawns in the front, and landscaped around the homes. Because this is a cluster, everything's squeezed together.
Would you be able to move the, the right property, on those right lots, the right property line to coincide with the 100-foot buffer? So that the ownership doesn't move into the 100-foot buffer?
We have, we have, there's a rear yard setback requirement on these. I think they're 15 or 20 feet, which is close to this here now.
Looks like you could push them a little closer to the road, though, doesn't it?
Yeah, we can push these closer, these three can come closer.
What do you guys think?
I agree.
Because that would then leave, well, it's the buffer, it would be open, right?
I mean, anything they do in here, they'd have to get permission from conservation. And we know, we have a going to pull these forward, so we don't have to go into there.
Just thinking that if you were able to put that as the back property line, then there's, you know, then the homeowners don't have any question there, right? That they're into the 100-foot buffer.
If I do it on these two lots-
There's nothing that shows them where the 100-foot buffer is.
They have no clue.
Well, I'm thinking we're going to have them mark it, too, right?
Yeah.
Right, have some kind of demarcation, like, like you said before, Bill. Like, we did that up at, where did we do that? Was that White Ash? I think it was White Ash, I think that, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think if, given, of course, the dimensional setbacks, right, and go from there, meaning that you have to work backwards from what those dimensional setbacks are for the backyard, and then see if you could just pull that line to the right a little bit. Understanding that, you know, you obviously have a, the, uh, mathematical formula to work with. Meaning that it may not be exactly on that 100-foot buffer, but it could be closer than it is now, is what I'm trying to say.
I have a question. Is there any, my concern is, from the back lot line of number seven, there's only 30 feet to the houses on Townsend. Now, my question would be, is there any possibility of moving the, you know, I understand what, what Steve is saying. You know, these houses with the really long driveways, if we can move them down a little bit closer. But could you move the entire bit down? In other words, could you come down another 20 feet, let's say, heading toward Ann Vinyl? So that you end up gaining 20 feet at the back lot line? So that it all just comes down?
That's also, this is also assuming the 700-foot-
What?
This is also assuming the 700-foot driveway, which is a waiver as well, which makes it longer.
No, no, it doesn't. If it, if you take-
Well, you're shorting it. I'm agreeing with you, Anne. I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, you're saying you're shorting it.
We're shortening the whole thing.
Does that mess up the leaching field?
Governor, I, I can't pull these down at all, because of this.
That can't move down either?
Is the leaching field, uh, completely sort of geometrically constrained in the sense of, like, the distance from the corner there to the lot line? The lower right-hand corner?
Yeah, I mean, there's setback, it's also based upon the soils, the perquation, groundwater. I mean, we, we can't move this. And we have setback requirements from here to the houses, so, I mean, these are as close as we can get to here.
Well, I think that's what it, that's what it comes down to. You can't move the field.
These houses are played in here.
So you don't have, you don't have 20 feet you can move the leaching field?
No.
But you-
Because of-
The soils, the-
The soils get worse or something, or you haven't tested them there?
No, the mounding.
I, I'm not sure I understood your answer, Paul. Do the soils get worse, or you just haven't tested them there?
No, we have tested the soils around here.
Yeah.
But the perquities start to jump all over the place down in here. This is where the better soil was on the property for the entire site. This is the most, um, this is the best place for the, um, proposal.
Okay, but could you, could you conceivably, if you go further up, could you move lot 11 down, move 10? You could not necessarily move 16 off of that cul-de-sac, but you could move it down. And then you can move the left-hand side down as well, and leave your leaching field where it is. So that you have, you're shortening the drive, and you're also giving about 20 extra feet in the, in back of lot seven. Do you follow what I'm saying? I mean, make-
What you're concerned, the setback from the back of the-
Yeah, it's teeny.
Of the, the, the property, this way?
Trying to keep a, a larger, undisturbed buffer there.
Well, that's, that's 50, that's 50 feet right now.
Well, it says-
It says 30.
It says 30 on the plan.
No, no, I'm saying from back of the house.
No, I, I don't want it from the back of the house. I want it from-
Undisturbed.
Undisturbed, 30 feet is not much. And it's, so we're going to end up with the homeowner mowing the lawn. If we can just somehow figure out a way, I mean, you've done a great job with this, but can we bring it down? Just move, move lot 10, move the driveway so that it's opposite lot five? I mean, I think you can do it.
I mean, to, you know, to make these work, we have to move everything this way. And to pull this down, moving it this way was easier, with pulling this down might be difficult. We could look at perhaps getting that part of the house over-
Can you elongate the septic field, and then therefore shorten it?
No.
By 20 feet?
No, because we, we, we've got the 100-foot buffer zone coming right along here as well. There's setback requirements for the wetlands.
No, I'm saying hold the bottom line where it is, but widen your septic field so that it, it can shrink.
No, because the soils are changing here. We also have the basin in here, this is where we have the pump chambers. Well, you know, we can, I don't, pulling this down 20 feet is going to be difficult because of all the grade changes we're going to do. We, you know, to pull this down, we'd end up having to pull everything down and basically redesign this whole project. If there are any, the utilities, everything, you can see some machine, it's a better word for that.
Well, one, one thing, Paul, and Paul Sharnon can speak to this. They actually had a neighborhood meeting with all the neighborhoods with that setback. And Paul, the two people that are directly behind lot seven, were they at that meeting?
Yes. I, I guess as a general observation, I know I'm supposed to sit down to keep my mouth closed.
No, you don't, no, 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 no.
Your lawyers may tell you that, but we don't tell you.
There's people around you.
Right.
You know, open space is supposed to provide more open space and buffers. So in a, in a conventional subdivision, the lot lines would be right up against each other. If you, if you, if you try to tweak these every time and make them this and that and the other thing, you, you're going to, you're going to have developers looking at it as, I may as well just develop a, a, a definitive subdivision plan, because it's going to be a lot easier and a lot quicker and a lot. I mean, I just think the folks that were on Townsend, Townsend Road, and the meeting that we had, and actually in meetings here, were very happy to have that open space.
I withdraw my thought. It, it's just, I, I can only hope.
Well, we might need a little contingency plan.
We might.
I get a suggestion. Less houses.
I, I-
Suggestion.
Could you identify yourself?
Mike Tenholy, 31 miles on the road to Bubba. Everyone's going through all this and all that. If you're trying to make them less close to, uh, Lower Strawn Road, whatever it's called, okay? Just build less houses in there. There's one option. Also, on this here, on the drainage they brought up, and I haven't been able to speak before you vote on it or anything, they switched the drainage now, it's going towards my apartment, the open strays, and I don't want to go that way. We're wetlands over where we are now, and I, last thing I were, I just want any more water coming my way. Where wetlands are where we are now, and I, last thing I worry, I don't want any more water coming my way. And any grading being done where the grading's towards my apartment.
I, I guess I don't know where that is or what you're talking about, so.
Can I get up and show you?
You may, yeah.
I'm up at Thirty-One Long Meadow Road. The housing development is away from me, no doubt about it. This is, what do you call this road here?
Townsend.
Townsend, Townsend Road, that goes down around there. If it's careful, Mike probably is right up here. Everything from here where the house is, existing house now, or is it about in here somewhere?
Around the road.
Yeah, right in the road somewhere. Everything is more or less graded back slightly all this way to the marshland. And that's why Townsend Road has so many problems over the years, I put in wet basins, that's what I do for a living. I put in some pumps almost every people here. So, any more water for these open spaces, headed by way? No way, I don't want there water coming in. This water here should be going up to the street, the street drains, this is gonna go down there, if this is sufficient here. But the site is not viable for this many homes.
Well, the stormwater design is to not increase the volumetric flow or the velocity from the site. That's the design, so you wouldn't get more water.
We scale it off, you're about fifteen hundred feet from there. Fifteen, you know, that's a third of a mile.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on the stormwater design?
I'm sorry?
That doesn't answer my question.
Well, let me, let me just, we've got your point, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I know.
Who are you?
I'm seventy Townsend, so I am, I think what Anne is, the, the house in question that Anne is talking about, that's gonna be super close to the back.
Uh, what's your name?
Steve Comerford.
Okay.
The, the stormwater regulations are written, and we've, we've talked about that several times, but what about, what about ground, existing groundwater? Because that was one of the things that got brought up at the meeting that the folks had at the Ann Vinyl House. And that, I, I feel, I don't remember what the answer was, but I know that the Tumi's who are down at the end of Townsend Road, when there's a heavy rainstorm, they have, well, the equivalent of like Old Faithful coming up out of ground there. And just spilling out into the road, and so the groundwater is significant. And so, stormwater, I guess, is one thing, but what about the, the water table being extremely high there to begin with? And how do you kind of, how do you reconcile that with the stormwater? Like, if there's more water coming into people's houses as a result of, and I'm not saying that this is gonna happen, but how do you kind of prove out stormwater versus groundwater?
Do you care to address that?
First of all, there's a whole series of soil testing up here, so we know where the groundwater is in general, it is high. But when you do a design, you have to design everything relative to the groundwater. Under the situatique unique, it has its own stormwater regulations, in addition to subdivision regs, in addition to state regs, fed regs, na, 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 na. Everything has to be up above the groundwater, so you don't impact it, your stormwater basins have to be so many feet above that. The foundations are up out of the groundwater, that's one of the reasons you bring the fill in. But under the situatique by law, you can't have an increase in the amount of water leaving the site, that's called an increase in volume. Under the old plans we did, where it still, uh, released water, there'd be more water leaving the site, but at the same rate it was leaving before. This, this land up in here, it's, it's all shedding, um, toward the wetlands, it's all shedding toward the back of these lots. Those stormwater basins have been designed and they've been reviewed by their peer engineer. And one of the things that we, they look for is that we don't set an increase in volume of water off the site, it has to be contained on the site, so we do that. So the groundwater is going to dictate the vertical elevation of the stormwater basins, um, the grading on the site, the location of the foundations, so you don't have water in them. Years ago, when they designed this, a lot of these basins were probably put right in the groundwater, and if these basements are more than three feet into the ground, then they're in the groundwater, and they probably have some pumps out there. Either that or, uh, some kind of.
Oats.
So this is all taken into account when these newer projects are designed. And this one does meet those regulations, that, that stormwater bylaw situatique is very tough to meet, and it does require more engineering that you normally do on the site than we did, say, twenty years ago. But that, that's all been done on this project, and it's being reviewed by the board's peer engineer as well.
Any other questions? Okay, we've, we've, we're running out of time here. But I would like to try to get through at least, at least the things that need to be addressed going forward, so. I'm not sure, did we finish your questions?
Yeah, pretty much, I mean, my, my, my only point was now that, you know, it seems like we're rolling with the flexible open space development, it's just, and it seems like we're all kind of saying similar things, but in different ways, is just to really embrace the essence of what sort of development that is, and tighten things up as much as we can to get the maximum benefits of the principles of an open, flexible open space development. But meanwhile, still maintain your ability to have a marketable product, that's, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying. Is if there's any way to tighten things up, that would be, I would be very amenable to that, but that's all.
We'll take a look at it.
What were our other issues now?
There was the waivers.
Waivers, yes.
I said, just about the waivers, again, my, and again, not my experience, you guys. The whole, there's always with an open space development, it, it just so happens, the way the bylaw is written is weird. You, you actually do a definitive plan approval with waivers, and so the, the nature of it is, if this was a definitive, if, if it was a definitive plan, there wouldn't be any waivers, the nature that you're doing a flexible requires waivers, because, and that's the nature. So it's a waiver, but it's really not a waiver, is because under the flexible, the board can do whatever they think is, whatever they think is appropriate, period.
Right.
So a waiver is a waiver in main, but really, that's all it is.
No, we've, we've done a few of these now, so. I just wanna get the list, so I know what we're talking about.
Can I ask, can I ask just towards your list, I don't mean to interrupt your list, but, uh, the things for us to look at as follows, is one, we're gonna look at the, uh, widening the sidewalk along Ann Vinyl. Two, I think what I'm hearing from the board is, if the road is going to remain private, then the board, our request for granite waivers would be something that wouldn't be disruptive to the DPW from, from their standpoint, am I reading that correctly?
That's the way I feel, yes.
That's correct, yeah.
With the current Street Acceptance Committee.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Because it's changed.
Okay.
Since I've been on it.
All right, all right, so, okay, so we're clear on that one. That's all, that's all I had on that one.
Okay, but we, we've also got, so we got three things that are sort of different, one is road length, road width, and the curbing, right? So those three things. You've asked to, to defer a landscape plan? Is that what you've asked? Is that what you're, or eliminating?
So, we've asked for a waiver to have a registered landscape architect prepare a landscape plan. What we show on our plan are the street trees, and, you know, we believe the only landscaping would be for the street trees, you know, the homes would be separate from that, because that's private, it's a private home with a private landscape around, around it. The street trees are outside the layout and easement, so they don't grow into the sidewalks. And plus, if that tree canopy gets wide, it, it, it doesn't interfere with the sidewalk and the roadway.
Ben, what's your thought on that, you're the expert?
Uh, I very strongly disagree with that, that particular waiver, actually. I think, I mean, if we're gonna think of an analogy, you could have a structural engineer or civil engineer, they're not necessarily in the business of designing the architecture of houses. Just as a civil, you know, in this case, civil engineer isn't necessarily in the business of designing the architecture of the landscape. And I think that, in, in general, landscape architects, I mean, they're gonna do a lot more, and just pick the street trees, they're gonna also look at grading, they're also gonna look at possibly making the stormwater basin seem more like an amenity to the neighborhood, rather than like a utility. So make it something that's actually nice to look at, rather than just a big, you know, place to hold water. I think that it would add a lot to the project, I know it would be an added expense, but, um, I think the outcome would be much better for the people that are gonna move in there as well as the neighborhood, but that's just my two cents on that.
So that was one issue, there was an issue about deferring a stormwater erosion and sedimentation control plan.
What it is, is there's a SWP plan, it's a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. And that also contains your erosion controls that you would employ during construction. But that plan is usually put together once we know what the final plan is gonna be for this project, we still have to do it, it has to be done before construction. All, all we're asking to do is to ask for a waiver and do it after this is, this plan's been approved, and then we know what we're working with, and then we prepare it. We, we, we submit it to the planning board, you probably have it reviewed by Peter, and then they could start construction.
So you're not asking for a waiver, you're asking for it to be a condition of approval.
Right.
Yeah, so it's not a waiver, it's a condition of approval, that's all, it's just a timing.
I would recommend that the board make sure you have some information on that prior to.
I was just thinking that. Yeah, we need some level of understanding of how you're gonna manage the site during construction, and how you're gonna manage the runoff and all that. Because that, that has actually proved to be as big a problem as anything else during construction, is, you know, water being directed during construction onto other people's property and all of that, so. There should be at least a site plan that sort of lays out, this is the game plan, this is where the spoils pile's going, this is how we're managing it.
That's all in the SWP plan, when you do the SWP plan, there's certain criteria, there's certain requirements.
I understand it, Paul, all I'm saying is I'd like the, the sort of the, the rudimentary layout of that thinking on a piece of paper that's part of this plan, right? If we can do that. And we, we do it all the time, right, so, I mean, we do it on most of these subdivision developments, so I wouldn't think it would be that difficult to do.
We can probably show some of the, um, some, some of the items that would be involved with that. You know, like the silt sock or the, you know, the erosion controls. But when you get into the SWP plan, you know, you get into the storage areas for the construction materials and stockpiling material and everything. And until we know where this is going, it's, it's, it's hard to give you a hundred percent plan, but we'll look into it.
Yeah, but you'll have, you'll have a pretty good idea where this is going, right? I mean, I mean, once we get towards the final plan, you'll have a pretty good sense.
Well, one of the problems is, you know, you're going to, Mr. Sharon is going to develop this property, put in the infrastructure and so on, and then the lots are going to be sold. He's not going to be the one that's building these houses.
Yes, actually, yes.
You will be building all of these houses, it won't go out to different.
No, there are three partners in the, in the subdivision, and the three of us will be building houses.
Okay, because what we've run into, once everything has been sort of put together, you get a builder in there who's not paying any attention, and is dumping stuff where it shouldn't be, and it creates a horrific problem.
Yeah, no, I, I know there was a problem at Blanchett Farm, but we, we're not selling lots off.
All right, thank you.
So, so we got that?
Yeah.
You need an overview.
Traffic, I think, my sense is, I think Karen makes a good point here, is we need to make sure sightlines are good, turning radiuses are good, we know what the traffic volume is in and out there. Imagine during school period, it's a constant stream of traffic flowing through there, right? So, I don't know what, what has been submitted to date, I don't know if you've done anything to date at all.
We've submitted some information, Peter's asked for more, we're gonna provide that to him in the next round.
What I would, what I would suggest, let's take a look at this sidewalk, and I, I understand you got an issue that, a vaticus where you have sidewalk in front of there, maybe if we can address that, then that addresses any concerns, there are any kids walking up there.
It's really the children that don't live in the subdivision, it's the people, the children that are from away that are walking. The other thing you might think about too, is in conjunction with the field that you're putting with the, the septic system, that you might have some type of a pathway. So that the children, they'll find it anyway, can walk to school without even going out to Ann Vinyl.
Yeah, because there is supposed to be a public amenity in all these flexible open space subdivisions.
Well, you're talking about a pathway within the subdivision to accommodate the people within the subdivision?
To school.
Yeah.
Kids will make that up anyway.
They will, they'll figure it out.
I don't think you need to do.
I don't think we need to do that, because they will find a way.
Are you advocating tracking more mud into the homes?
Hey, you know, that's why they have sharks.
That's why she's not buying a house.
Rex says it already exists.
What?
Rex says it already exists.
When I was out doing the park test.
Probably from back there.
There's a pathway there that goes right out to the school.
There's even one, there's supposed to be one at the end of Townsend, um, easement, that goes right into the back of Haveli. But back in the eighties, parents were so afraid that their children somehow would be kidnapped on that path, and that was the end of it.
Okay, um, what else do we have?
We have quarter of nine.
I know, I just, I wanna wrap this up, so we can move on, just wanna, I'm putting a list together here, so I just wanna make sure.
Just for notes, again, if like, under the conditions, when it's approved, the fact that we write in that the, it's a private road into perpetuity, because I think we did that recently with another subdivision.
I think you should say that it's not built to current subdivision standards, there's, there's a question as to whether it could be stepped by the town.
That could be a condition of approval.
Some of the other waivers that they requested, the major ones were, um, you know, they have a separate easement plan, which seems very reasonable. And bounds, um, along the lot lines and change of directions, they want, uh, bounds, uh, change the direction of the roadway layout with rebar and caps versus, uh, versus concrete bounds.
Okay.
What does that mean, actually, is there, like, really a piece of rebar sticking up, and then there's a.
How's that work?
No, what it is, it's a, it's a piece of reinforcing steel, a half-inch, a half-inch diameter, and then we, what we do is to put a plastic cap on top of it. And we draw them flush with the ground.
Okay.
But along the roadway.
Saves your mower blades.
I mean, where the roadway changes, where it's set an actual, uh, concrete bound, and once you get off the road, we, we drive the bars, and then you can find them with a metal detector very easily.
Well, that was my main question, because we have the concrete bounds, and there they are, like, they're, I think they're, they're low enough now, the mower goes over them, but, um, they are somewhat of a, a nuisance, and I didn't know if these, this sounded like a big piece of rebar sticking up.
They just use a metal detector, and they said, that's what it is.
Usually, it's only the surveyors who would need them, the propellers, sometimes mark them with a wood.
Anything else on all this?
Another major waiver that we've done on, pretty much all in the past, is, uh, location of trees on the twelve-inch caliper in areas of proposed disturbance. They show you, uh, you know, kind of lot line, you know, trees on the outside, are there any specimen trees in the area that is gonna be developed? That you haven't shown?
We didn't see any out there, I mean, we were pricking in the woods, but a lot of that is brush and undergrowth. Uh, there's one tree by the old house, I think that's gonna stay, but other than that, there, there weren't any specimen trees. A lot of this area were fields, even thirty, forty years ago. So the stuff that's growing back are saplings, you know, three, four-inch trees, that, that.
But you've, you've looked at it, though, I mean. Okay.
Most of the other waivers are just, you know, standard ones you probably do.
Not a waiver, but it's something I think needs to be addressed, and that is, who's gonna have control over this open space?
Homeowners association, though.
Do they have it all?
Huh?
They have it all?
Right, and there'd be, that association, there would be limitations, obviously, on what could happen there.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. I think we would, what we'd also want is to, to put some demarcations on the hundred-foot buffer line for the, for the wetlands as well. That's, that's kind of a minor detail.
And again, about a demarcation, I know what they did on ours, they did the stone walls with the rubble, I mean, it's not like a manufactured stone wall, it's just stones that are fairly simple, but that's an easy way to demarcate it that looks nice.
Okay. 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 Well, I think I've got a running list. Hopefully you do, too.
Yes. We'll compare notes with Karen.
Yep. I'll give you my notes to make sure we got them all, and then hopefully we can sort of boil this down.
Yeah, we'll try to get everything in, loaned a van, so that consulting engineers can get it. So hopefully we're down to short strokes.
And do we have a continuance? When are we up next?
Before we read the continuance, I'll just say one thing that's probably not viable, but just on the gentleman's thought about, like, right, sixteen homes, if we did go to fifteen?
Yeah.
I know that that's probably not financially as beneficial, but then you could have more room there. If that was something you wanted to look at.
One of the, one of the things is, Richard, and again, it's a quid pro quo. We, we're keeping historic house, that's a net negative here. And that's, and that's why the lot is for the net negative. In other words, if that wasn't, it wasn't there, but kind of the historic.
Well, you're still selling, you're still selling that, though.
That's a net negative. You're going to lose, literally, you're going to ask Paul to renovate that and sell it. It's.
You move it.
And move it.
You have to move it, and you've got to renovate it. And that's going to take a lot of work, because the inside walls are in touch with the inside.
But it's still a, I mean, for a potential home buyer, that's a lot, some home buyers, that it's a big plus, having a historic structure. But anyway, it's just something to think about. I think it's probably off the table, but I just thought I'd make a comment.
Okay, we're ready.
I got one more thing, please.
Yes, sir. You get the last comment, and then we're, we got to go.
Last time, Lucy, I went over the numerous things, which got most of, the traffic study's very important. I sat down there at Havley School in the parking lot, and I watched kids on the sidewalks and all that. And I told you that I measured the roads and then the width of the buses. The two buses go by each other on Anvil Road, the mirrors are hanging over on the sidewalk. So the width of the road is not wide enough, okay? Now, six days ago, I was coming home, coming down Anvil Road, and there's a car.
Just, just so you know, we have the traffic study on our list, so.
Okay, but I just want to make this point.
And, you know, certainly if any of these gentlemen want the details, I think they should talk to you directly. And so.
Well, I think the board should know about this.
Okay.
All right. I came back, I was coming back home on Anvil Road, and a car sideswiped the telephone pole in front of the school, therefore proving the road is not wide enough.
Or proving someone's a poor driver.
There you go.
That's what I was going to say.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else? Good. All right. Let's hear our motion.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearings for the definitive subdivision plan and flexible open space special permit for Curtis Estates at 90 Anvil Road, a flexible open space definitive subdivision until December fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen at seven P.M., and to continue the time for action for filing with the town clerk until January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen.
Let me just ask one caveat there. December, December fourteenth, because I understand Thanksgiving and all that. What's the meeting prior, and we'll extend it as necessary to January thirty-first, is, you know, January fifteenth or something? I'm just concerned with that.
January eleventh.
Yeah, January eleventh, if that, if that's okay. Not knowing that obviously if we don't get.
We'll, we'll address it again on the fourteenth, so that's probably fine.
Yeah, fine.
So.
So amend this motion or?
Amend the motion to January, just the last date changes to January.
Oh, amend the motion to continue the time for action for filing with the town clerk until January eleventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Does that work for you, Karen? Because it was the thirty-first, which is not a meeting. Which is not a meeting, so.
You usually want it not at a meeting in case.
Right. So let's make it the fifteenth.
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's make it the fifteenth. Okay.
Until January fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Yep.
Should we have a second as amended?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be right back.
That was nice work on the layout.
Who seconded it?
Um, I think Anne did.
Oh. Is Ted here? Did he show up? Oh, yeah.
I can imagine. Remember how we did, I think at White Ash Farm, we actually had to put little trees, stakes with a sign on them.
Yeah, we drive, I mean, I only thought it was disturbing.
That's what we need.
Something to mark, mark the area. I'm concerned, and I'll be well in bed, my staff is up on town, if you move up the town, then you find it there on Noblesland.
But you know, Blanchett Farm was calling, I think it was.
Yeah, it also.
My brother liked to live there, and he had his backyard.
You just keep moving out.
And just to keep moving back. If the kids get older, and it could hit the ball harder.
Yes. I think that's it.
You all got the first draft a few days ago. The Green Bush Driftway Gateway zoning initiative. I don't know if it's late, so I'm going to go through this fairly quickly. If that's okay with you. This is all based on the work that the EDC started about a year and a half ago to look at, you know, what might happen in the Driftway. Looking at the road 20 years and different areas within the Driftway. The area around the train station as well as the Green Bush Village area, the transfer station, and so on. What is the possibilities, what are the possibilities in these areas? And what are the challenges? And what do we envision seeing? This isn't the first time that we've done a visioning for this area. In fact, in 2004, when the train station was being planned, we started to look at what would happen in the future. In fact, what's happening in this concept plan is basically happening now with some infill development in the Green Bush Village area. You can see the infill there at Fifty Country Way, which is underway right now. In 2004, we did the Economic Development Plan, which also did some visioning for the area. And went a little bit further in identifying types of developments, and open spaces, and streetscapes that people would like to see there, would prefer to see there, if things are going to be developed.
That's what North Citywood's going to look like.
Yeah, really. I don't think so. It's not going anywhere.
And then so ultimately, they put together an overall concept plan, a vision plan, which basically sort of continues to do infill developments in the Green Bush Village area at a scale of things that aren't being done there today. A real mix of uses from sort of low-scale, commercial and moderate-scale mixed use to flex buildings and space for the trades. There's a lot of trades down there, and there's some new developments that's occurring in that regard. Around the train station, the idea was that it would be a little higher-density mixed use, designed in sort of a pedestrian orientation, so that the buildings would be closer to the streets and sidewalks. There'd be some substantial streetscape improvements. Parking would be shared and internalized within the blocks. And that basically then would provide some diversification of our housing stock, so that you'd have smaller units, whether they're ownership units or rental units, that are in close proximity, not only to the train station, but to the businesses in the area, as well as the recreational assets at Widow's Walk.
No, I think that's the transfer station in the back.
North River.
It is?
I think so.
What was the question?
All right, go back to the next one. The first one that you had. Nope.
This one?
That one. The white space, is that the trade?
Oh, that is the transfer section.
I thought so.
So the EDC thought that, looking forward, that that is really one of the only opportunities in town to facilitate a business park, business-type development.
So there wasn't contemplated parking on the other side of, for the train station, where we're actually reserving some now?
No, we're sort of laying out a business park, is what that's doing. So ultimately, the transfer station might end up in another location in town, and that opens up the possibility of a business park that's related again to the train station, but also to the housing in the immediate area. So, you know, and that's providing room for a little larger-scale development, business development, whereas the Green Bush is really sort of small, small-scale flex space for the trades and that sort of thing. This would hopefully accommodate, you know, office buildings and that sort of thing. And then, you know, a little bit further on, looking at Widow's Walk, looking at the possibility of maybe some function space, maybe of small accommodations, basically just adding value to what is a beautiful asset and providing some amenities that could really benefit the town. On the south side, along the North River, we're only sort of upgrading, you know, passive and active recreational facilities that are there today, whether it's redoing the picnic area with any more trails.
Isn't one of those a location for a senior center?
No, that's further down.
Is it further?
Yeah, at the junction of Driftway and Kent Street. There's that triangle.
Maybe there's a boathouse of some sorts, for people who rent kayaks and canoes. But basically, it's all oriented towards a river, and it's recreational-oriented as well. So the current zoning is, there's a lot of base districts and overlay districts, there's a lot of overlap between the base and overlay districts. But basically, most of it is in the general business zone and the commercial zone. There's a little bit of R2 in there, residential two, and then there's several overlay districts, including the V-Bod, the village business overlay district, as well as resource-related, protection-related overlay districts, the water resource protection district, and the floodplain watership protection district. Also throwing in there the wireless communications overlay district, and the planned development district, which covers most of the area that Widow's Walk is, as well as the North River Conservation Park. So that's what it looks like. And that's our current zoning map.
Whoa.
Green Bush area. I always make the joke, it looks like fuzz, like in the old days when you'd leave the TV on in the middle of the night and get that fuzzy pattern. So what we're trying to do is basically take the best of what we have in the V-Bod and the design standards that are 760, the standards that are, basically, the form sort of pedestrian-scale mixed-use development that allow that out of what's in the current bylaws. If you look at the current dimensional standards for each of the base districts, and this is showing the general business district and the commercial district, which are very similar, if you translate those into diagrams, you can see that there's a setback of 30 feet minimum, which makes it difficult to create any kind of connection with the sidewalks and create a pedestrian part. And you're also, on these lots, you're either requiring them to put in, have lot sizes that are bigger than what typically would be allowed, or put the parking in front of the building. I mean, the parking is allowed in front of the building up to six feet within the right of way. So by creating this fairly large setback, in effect, if you're going to keep a reasonable-sized lot, you're basically promoting strip development. And so what we're trying to do is kind of reverse that. This is a residential lot in the business district, general business district. You can't mix the uses, but you can have a residential lot or you can have a commercial lot. Mixed use is not allowed in the business district. You have to use a V-Bod in order to do that. But what happens is that the lot gets a lot bigger, because the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet for a dwelling unit, and the frontage gets wider. So when you start making the lots that big, with that much frontage, you're really getting out of scale with the pattern that exists in the Green Bush Village area and the pattern that we've sort of envisioned happening around the train station. And you add the height to that, you know, there's a step-back requirement in Harbor, which makes sense, except that when you have a step-back requirement, you basically already counter the effect of, you know, shadowing the sidewalk and the canyon effect that you're trying to avoid. So that, again, with a setback and disconnecting the building from the street, you're causing some issues that aren't necessarily solved by having a step-back in the third story. That makes sense, and we've read a lot of zoning that requires that, but usually it's where the buildings are closer to the sidewalk, so that as it gets to be taller, you're stepping back those upper floors, so that you don't get that canyon effect and shadowing effect.
But we don't have a lot of that kind of setback in Harbor, though.
We don't.
Right, it's right up on the street?
But the standards are such that, you know, I'm sure their waiver would be allowed, because everything up there is right up on the street. Or if it's set back a little bit, there's some sort of amenity there, like an outdoor dining space or that sort of thing. So you wouldn't want new buildings to be set back that far, because what do you have a grass between the sidewalk and the building? I mean, is there mixed-use buildings and commercial? So with the village center overlay district, village business overlay district, this is facilitating mixed use in the underlying zone. In the case of the Green Bush area, it overlays the commercial district near the train station and the general business district in the Green Bush Village area. And again, the lot size starts to get big, because the minimum frontage requirement is 100 feet. And when you start adding the dimensional standards that are required in the underlying base district, which is required in the V-Bod, if there's no dimensional standard that's specifically identified in the V-Bod, then you have to use the underlying dimensional standard. So the minimum lot size, again, becomes 10,000 square feet to start with, if you add the residential. And you wouldn't use the V-Bod unless you're doing residential. So basically, what we're doing is we are trying to replace the underlying zoning district with seven new districts. These are the Green Bush, Driftway, Gateway sub-districts. The first one being the Gateway Business Area, that's the area between the roundabouts and up to the railroad yard, the city yard. That's the first stretch of the corridor, where you have basically professional offices that are sort of backed off the road a little bit, and more screen space in front of the buildings. And that makes sense, because we want to create sort of a green entrance into the Green Bush area. Once you get over the rail corridor, or into the intersection, that becomes the Driftway Transit Village sub-district. And that's where we're promoting a little higher-density mixed use, not only on the railroad side, on the MBTA side, but also across the street, where there's the medical office building, where there's social arts and that sort of thing. There's some lots down there that are either vacant or underutilized and have potential to be developed, so what we want to do is essentially create that, you know, that sort of intersection as the centerpiece of that district, that village center district. Up above, in the Green Bush Village Center, that is a sub-district where, again, we are setting standards so that it's really sort of emulating what's happening up there today with lower-scale mixed use, flexible for commercial, industrial, and some residential influence as well. And then as you go further south, behind Dunkin' Donuts, and there's a couple of out parcels, one of them's got the welding shop on it, the other one is used for storage of various vehicles and equipment and so on. Those have become part of the North River Residential District, so you have some sort of moderate residential development that can happen on those small parcels that takes advantage of their access and visibility to the North River, much as James Landy has and Riverway has. So it'd be the same sort of condominiums, townhouses, whether it's ownership or rental. Maybe that's for that scale of residential. And then with the Widow's Walk area, that's the Driftway Conservation and Recreation District. Again, basically, you know, preserving the recreational attributes, but also adding the possibility of some function space and some accommodation space up near the road. And then the North River Conservation area, that's recreation, just enhancing recreation amenities on that spot. So this is what the new districts would look like, and you can see the surrounding areas, the residential two zone to the north, the D-zone, which is the saltwater and, the saltwater tideland conservation district, the yellow, or the yellow to the left, to the west, which is the R1 district. So this is how it will fit in amongst the other districts. The, I bet.
Oh.
And then this is the overlay districts that will still apply. However, you probably eliminate the V-Bod here, because you're replacing that with base standards that integrates, you know, density in a similar fashion, but also at the same time have design standards that are currently in the V-Bod as well as in Section 760. So you're integrating, basically allowing by right a certain level of density, but you're requiring design standards to match those. So you're ensuring quality development in the process.
Where's the Water Resource Protection District in all this? I've kind of lost track of it here. Is it up there?
It's there, it's the brown dotted line, so you see it from the legendary, it's the dots. So you follow the dots, and it covers quite a good area.
This, all of this there?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, there's a lot. Huge.
Because it's got both the Zone A and the Zone Two, right?
Yeah. It's a lot.
Wow.
I mean, even separating the base maps from the overlay maps, it's really still difficult to see. It's almost like you have to take each of the overlay districts by themselves, so that they pop out on the map. It's really difficult in some cases to pick up on.
Yeah. The real difficulty is going to be able to be explained, the transition from what it was to what you're proposing now, right?
Yeah, this is the first shot at Steve. I mean, this is showing what's underlying these, these are the outlines of the new districts, so you can see that the area near the train station, that's all commercial, and goes back a thousand feet from the Driftway. And it goes on the south side as well, and then beyond that, you know, up where the Stock Bridge is, is R2. So that's a first shot at showing what's proposed for the new base districts and how it affects the current base districts. We're eliminating all the base districts underneath on this layer, and then we're adding back the under, the overlay districts on this layer. But even now, it's still hard to pick up.
That's going to be hard to explain to people at town meetings.
Oh, yes.
It's better than that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can continue to sort that even further if we need to.
Well, communication is going to be the key on this, right? And I think Richard's right, it's trying to show the transition from what we have to what we're proposing.
Yeah.
Is going to be the difficult thing.
Right. I agree. So we'll break it down even further.
We have to keep it simple.
Yes.
As simple as possible.
Yeah.
That this is what we are hoping to do, because if we don't, eventually, someone with enough time and enough money is going to come in and do whatever they want, and we're going to sit back and wonder, how did that happen? Because our zoning allowed it to happen.
Well, if you use the commercial underneath, yeah, then it's.
Well, I think what you want to do is show the vision of what we're proposing to do, then show the actual.
Mess.
The pictures of what it can be, right?
Right.
Not, I mean, that's where we want to go.
Because of the time, I've actually skipped. I'll send this out to you tomorrow, see. There's a whole process of showing the individual sub-districts.
Well, at least, I'm looking at the document that's called G-D zoning bylaw, Section 580, Draft 1.0, BCB PD 102517, PDF.
That's the document.
That's what you're looking at, I mean, right?
No, that's a PowerPoint.
This is the summary of.
Oh, but I mean, I guess we have, I've been looking at these maps.
You have, I mean, you've got the Driftway Vision Plan.
Yeah, you've got the maps and stuff, but it's.
But we need to pull it together in bite-sized pieces, so.
Well, one of the things I wanted to just comment on, we had this happen recently, where there was a proposal that came forth in the Village Business Overlay District that he couldn't meet the regulations, or he decided not to, and he went down to the, what was it, Business?
Business District.
Business District. Remember, that was the one that you were kind of on the fence, Anne? The addition to the, on Union Street.
That was Union Street, yeah.
The addition to that building. That was originally going to be under the Village Business Overlay District, that he was doing that.
He couldn't do it.
And he couldn't do it, so he went back to the Business. So anyway, I guess what I'm hearing now, is what you're saying, is in that particular case, he wouldn't have been able to fall back to the Business District, correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Right.
Under.
Because we're replacing that with new base district.
Okay, okay, good.
And basically, that new base district is translating that vision into actual standards.
Right.
So what you're looking at on the right side is what can be done under the Business District. You can put all the parking in front of it, and put the building way back on the lot.
And that's not what we want.
And that's not what we want.
Right. So my second question, follow-up question is, has there been a meeting with all the stakeholders? Because I think that's where we're going to get kicked back.
We're meeting with them now. We just started to meet with them.
Like, for instance, the one that you showed, a couple of ones ahead, where you were talking about at the end of the, yeah, there's that long piece where, how do I describe this? It's part of the North River Residential Sub-District, but it's next to the path that goes out along the North River, the path that goes past Dunkin' Donuts. So you've got the, yeah, you've got the, what's it called?
What's this?
Exactly. So you've got that green line, which is the pathway.
Right.
So on your map, the left-hand side of that, you have those buildings, or potentially you've zoned that to the North River Residential Sub-District. I'm just saying, if I was that property owner right there, I might be thinking, well, I don't like that, because I want mine to be commercial. Like, I guess what I'm saying is that that may be some problems there.
Well, yeah, you've got to look at what the current as-of-right is for the property owners and what you're changing it to, right?
Right.
Well, right now, it's all commercial.
Right.
And there's a provision in the bylaw which allows for the expansion of existing, pre-existing non-conforming uses. So we, they still get piled to do what they're doing out there. Not that there's a lot happening on that one particular parcel.
Right.
But we thought that the best use in that area, given its proximity to the river and proximity to Riverway and James Landy, was for that also to be residential, because it has no visibility from the Driftway.
You're right, yeah.
But, I mean, that line could always change. I mean, if the property owners there really feel strongly about being in the commercial district or a commercial district, then we could do that, but it just seems to me, given that the orientation of lots are really out looking at the river rather than back toward Driftway, that the property values would be higher as residential development. Even the parking lot behind the Plaza Days, which really isn't occupied very much.
It's not utilized, yeah.
That also would be, and it's in the Business District, but there's no reason why that couldn't also be added to the residential district. I mean, there's only so many opportunities to get views of the river in a place that's already developed, and those are really what's left.
You have to be careful about anything that is.
And it further diversifies the housing stock in close proximity to the train station, in close proximity to other resources, other recreational resources. So this is the other map. This is showing what we're calling civic districts. So the pathway itself, that's leading down next to Dunkin' Donuts and the little, the trailhead area that flows out to the Herringbrook River, Herringbrook, that is part of our civic zone, as is the North River Park, as is Widow's Walk. So what we're saying is that as development happens, we're giving developers opportunity to not only provide open space on their sites, but they can also contribute to open space that's going to benefit the entire district. Because we really want that, you know, we want these things to be enhanced. That's a beautiful trail that nobody knows about. And, you know, obviously, there's lots of things that could happen at Widow's Walk and at the River Park. So it's important to have, you know, open space, real usable open spaces available on site, but at the same time, give them the option of enhancing existing civic areas within the district. And the same thing goes for the Driftway. You look at that whole sort of area that's sort of the landscape strip that's in the right of it, that could be incorporated into development through the common, you know, sort of a central gathering point, even though it's public space, it could be civic space that benefits everybody in the district. So that's the idea for the civic zone. So we talked about the seven different new base districts. The first part of this is the city zone, which we just talked about, and then the pedestrian frontage zone. So basically, on those main corridors, the Country Way and up the Driftway, the New Driftway, we're requiring that commercial use be, is required at ground level, at least for a depth of 60 feet. This is similar to what's in the V-Bod today, although it says it's going to be 50% at ground level. What we're saying is it's got to be, it's got to be sort of pedestrian-oriented commercial use. Above, you can have residential, and behind that use, you can have residential. But facing the sidewalk, it's going to be restaurants, retail, private, personal servicing, barbershops, loans, that type of thing. Now, again, the idea is we're taking advantage of the visibility, and you're trying to create a strong relationship with the pedestrians walking down the street by having those types of commercial uses. Can't see this?
No.
I can't see this. But it is the table of use. And basically, what we put in there is pretty much what's already allowed in the districts today. The difference is that because of the new standards, dimension standards, replacement standards, the development becomes more pedestrian-oriented. So it's a mixture of different commercial uses and residential uses at different scales, but it's more or less contributing to what's already in the different districts.
So, not to digress, but I'm going to a little bit. So how does that fit into what you have?
Actually, as a first shot, pretty well.
Right, because you've got residential up on the street. Well, you don't have anything up on the street, right?
No, you got, actually, you have commercial, and you've got mixed use up on the Driftway.
No, you don't have anything, it's all set back.
Well, we want, we're going to move it forward.
The discussion we had with the developers was we would try to want to move it forward, you know, get rid of the parking.
The question is, are you trying to preserve a commercial space all the way along the street, or?
No, just on the Driftway. That's the only zone that's identified in the Country Way, where there has to be commercial.
But is that considered Driftway or New Driftway?
It doesn't.
It's on the civic zone map, so it's New Driftway.
Not that.
But it would be, my understanding is that it would be commercial then, right?
The residential would go back.
And that is commercial.
Right.
Commercial mixed use. So at ground level, that doesn't, right?
No, because that's all residential.
No, it isn't. No, that's off this.
Residential, but so the discussion we had was to move that forward.
Right.
Put the parking behind it, and actually front up on that open space that's not the new, make that essentially the tug. make that essentially a common. That, that's area between the roadway and the edge of the park. We didn't want houses on the, if you drive up the Driftway on the right side, there's a large grass area.
Retail space, covered parking.
Where the bank is? So you're, where the, okay. When I say bank, pick those up.
They said this was the only retail space.
We created that area so that it serves as a common. And that would benefit them, but also the district.
Do we want them to go all the way to the grass, not, no parking here? It all has to be on the side.
Maybe using transit.
How, just roughly, how much is the depth between the sidewalk and the front of the building then?
There would be, well, there'd be a sidewalk. The building might be set back a little bit so they could do like a dining terrace or that sort of thing. So.
But no parking there?
No parking.
Well, I guess I still don't understand the concept of this common. Meaning that I don't see that there's space there to do that. But anyway, that's.
No, he had a common design, kind of a, a common area designed into this thing.
Yeah. Have you seen this?
The Vision Plan.
Yeah, well, that was the one I, I looked, you used, you lent it to me just at the beginning of the meeting.
But it's, it's a concept and it's absolutely, I think, under the circumst- this is something that's allowed by you, by right at this point, is it not?
No.
No?
Today?
Today?
He's using the V-Bod, so initially.
Right. So he can do it?
Yeah.
If, if.
Well, he, it's a conditional use for, yeah.
Yes. So we.
He's got an opportunity.
He has an opportunity and, you know, it's.
And to have the infrastructure.
But the thing is, well, we're, we're running around about that. But, you know, and I want them to lose the, the spaceship, but aside from that, it, you know, all needs to move forward. This has potential within the Village Overlay Business District. So, but we want to make sure that it carries through the rest of the area.
Right.
So that's.
That's why we're proposing to change.
Right, okay.
But if you look at the Vision Plan, that, that area, that sort of leftover area that's within the right of it, which is grass now, that would be incorporated into, you know, that development project, whatever goes there. They're, they're like the candidate, but that would become a common area. That would become basically.
So instead of being on the street, there'd be 60 feet of common area before you get to the retail?
There would be, well, there, there would be, yeah, there would be a sidewalk, then there would be a common area, then there would be a new Driftway. And we also talked about possibly having.
What do you mean, the new Driftway?
This street right here.
So that.
I'm talking about going the other way, right? You're, you're walking along the sidewalk, then there's 60 feet of existing town-owned land that you're saying is common area.
That become a common area.
Right. So you are talking about leaving, you know, buildings not right up on the street, then.
Right.
Going to be 60 feet back.
But it won't be parking.
Yeah, well.
No, I know, I know there won't be parking.
This is a right of way, and this part of it right here is that green stage. That would be formalized into a common, and the buildings will be brought right up to it.
The buildings would be here.
Well, that's kind of what they did already.
Except they got the parking between that.
Yeah, and we don't want parking there.
Yeah. And then it's got enough of a slope to it. I don't know how much common is going to be.
Well, they're going to recreate anyways. They're putting parking in the buildings.
You know, this, this is something, a talk, a discussion for another day, what they can do with this to utilize some of the, this views on the social.
What I'm thinking about is, we need to sort of explain to people why this is, why this vision works, right? Why, I mean, you're, you're talking about seven new districts and, you know, 50 pages of, you know, information. That's not going to be easy to digest.
No.
I understand.
So we need to figure out how to boil it down.
Right. Agreed. But part of this, the idea here is that they have open space on site, but they can also contribute to the civic spaces which are publicly owned, but they're, they're incorporated into these, these new developments so that they're benefiting people that live there, but they're also benefiting everybody in the district. And, and these are just, you know, spaces that are, that are owned by the town, but need to be enhanced, whether it's a trail, whether it's this, or it's new facilities that are over there. So, so the, the first section of the design standards talks about the placement of buildings. Much like the, the V-Bod, you know, rather than having a minimum setback like you have in the underlying town of the district, there's a placement standard, so it's a minimum and maximum setback. So we want, we want these buildings, these commercial buildings and mixed-use buildings to be close to the sidewalk, close to the street. And if there's a space in between, there should be some sort of outdoor amenity, whether it's a dining terrace, whether it's a plaza, it should be something that again contributes to the, to the vitality, the walkability of these districts. So we have what we call a Build Two Zone. So each building would have to be in that minimum and maximum setback area. And the occupancy requirement too is they couldn't just have 10 feet of building in that area and have to take, you know, 50% of their furniture for the building up against the street. And ultimately what we want is to create some enclosure so that again you're creating a contracted and comfortable walking environment. And what we're, what we're doing in this section is really trying to sort of integrate the design standards that are in the V-Bod as well as in section 760. So we've got standards for heights and pitch roofs and dormers and all the things that are in there today. Sort of coordinate it all together. So we're trying to translate some of the, the standards into graphic illustrations to, to get the point across. So things like dormers, there's some basic dimensional standards that will go with those. Facade treatments and fenestration at the ground level and above. Those are standards that are currently in the, in the V-Bod. Extensions, additions to the building, those sorts of things are building up what's already there. Now, one thing that we're looking at, and this is sort of an optional thing, is that we would have different building types. So anytime a new development came in, they'd be classified as a building type. It could be everything from a detached house, a single-family home, or it could be a mixed-use building, it could be a townhouse, an attached, attached residential building. It could be flex space. But they'd be classified that, and each building would have their own design standards. So for example, if you're a house, if you're a single-family house, typically you'd be set back further from the sidewalk and you'd be set up a little bit so that there's a sense of privacy. If you're a commercial building or you're a mixed-use building, you'd be, you'd be up on the sidewalk or close to it with some outdoor amenity in between. So that allows you to sort of make sure that on a, on a building-by-building basis, you're, you're, you're consistent with the context of these areas, at least, you know, the ones that developed the Green Bush Village Center, and then what we want to see happen around the train station in terms of a pedestrian environment. So each, each of the sub-districts will then have a series of standards. Everything from the building placement to the design standards that we just mentioned, building types possibly, open space and facade treatment. So basically, everybody, there, there's individual standards for these different sub-districts based on, you know, the historic character of the Green Bush versus our new transit village next to the train station versus, you know, the, the resident, the River Residential area. So they're all specific to the, the overall concept and vision for these different districts. Density, of course, this is just a starting point in terms of what would be allowed by right and by special permit. And if there is a special permit issued for additional density, that would be tied to some public improvement. And that could be things like, again, contributing to civic space or enhancing the trails. It could be parking, it could be additional affordable housing. There's sort of a, a series of qualified density bonus improvements that could happen. And that also is similar to what's in the V-Bod today. Site development standards, basically saying that, you know, you could have an individual lot and that could be a development, or you could put, you know, a bunch of lots together in different buildings together. There's a standard for the length of a block, so, you know, again, if you're trying to create a walkable scale district, you want to, you know, you want to make sure that the blocks are no more than 400 feet long. You want intersections between them. And you try to internalize the parking so that it's an opportunity to share parking and, and sort of a central resource for everybody to use. And then there's, there's special types of blocks and development types. The one on the lower right is a cottage court. So, you know, we're trying to create some affordable housing, but it doesn't always have to be, you know, a multifamily house or a townhouse. You know, it could be individual, small, single-family houses. And that's something that's happening a lot now in Massachusetts. There's three or four of them that have happened in the last few years, where they're creating, you know, small, single-family homes that are centered on a common space and they have other, other amenities, community gardens, screenhouses, common parking areas. And, you know, they're typically limited to about, you know, 1,200 square feet and two bedrooms. But they provide an option for those who don't necessarily want to live in a condominium or, you know, a townhouse, want their own space, but still want to downsize from their four-bedroom house and two acres of land. They're tired of, tired of cutting, but they can still continue to live in town in these smaller units. Parking standards, basically we would keep the parking standards the way they are, but we would create a toolbox so that if you could demonstrate with your development project that less parking is needed, whether through shared parking, whether through satellite parking, whether through proximity to public parking, then you have the opportunity to reduce it. But you have to meet those, those tests. Also allowing things like tandem parking for residential units. That saves space, especially in locations like this where you tend to have less number of cars per unit. You can use less space for the parking lot and still accommodate the, the demand. And then what we call street-side parking in the lower right there. And essentially what that is, is that, the, the only exception to allowing parking in the front yard setback is this parallel parking that basically functions like on-street parallel parking. You put the sidewalk behind that and the street and the tree belt between it, and in effect, you're creating an extension to the right of way and publicly available parking. A good example is Linden Street in Wellesley. They redid some infill development along the corridor there. It was pretty narrow. And they set things back and they added a parking lane, which is technically on private land, but it functions like public on-street parking. It really adds and everyone gets to, gets to utilize that space. And then there's some sustainability site design standards that sort of enhance what we have for stormwater standards. And we talked about, you know, trying to make, you know, you know, open space on site more of an amenity. Things like infiltration parks, stormwater flow planters and so on. So sort of enhancing those standards while trying to treat all the, the stormwater on site. We also have standards for open space amenities. You know, typically in a, in a zoning regulation, you have a, a number, a percentage, 20% of the, the property, the development has to be open space without any particular quality standards. So what we're saying in this section is that you have to, you have a certain percentage, but it has to be of a certain type of open space amenity. So if it's a private house, the amenity is your private lawn. But if it's a, if it's a mixed-use building, it can be a variety of different things. It could be a plaza, it could be, it could be a rooftop garden, it could be a playground, it could be a pocket park. But what we're trying to ensure is that we're creating, you know, good quality spaces for the people that live here. And then finally, the open space or the public realm standards. If people are going to design new streets, you know, off the New Driftway or off Countryway, mostly the New Driftway, we want to make sure they're designed so that, again, we're accommodating pedestrians as well as vehicles. So we're looking for sidewalks, looking for street trees, looking for curbing, curb extensions, and, you know, the, you know, the breakdown of the sidewalk into, you know, the thoroughfare area where the pedestrians walk as well as the furnishing zones. And that's it. We may need to update the standards that are in the V-Bod as far as fair housing goes. And then we would add definitions, you know, we talked about the possibility of thinking about a 40R. If we do go down that road, we would have to flesh out these, these standards. So that's where we are. I understand this is probably overwhelming.
Yeah, we got that right.
But it's the first shot and, and I put everything, everything is in there so we can always scale it back.
And how much of sort of individual standards and, you know, those kinds of things, did you pull from other developments? I mean, is this fairly standard in other kinds of zoning bylaws that are like this?
Well, this is, this is form-based code. So basically the emphasis on really sort of that, you know, the, the envelope of the building, the placement of the building, the design of the building, the, you know, the, the design of the site in terms of placement of the parking and other amenities and quality open space. So it's really, it's, it's, it's allowing more density, but it's got a heightened level of design standards that go with it, which you can do.
No, I absolutely get that. I guess my question was, is this, this approach something that's been done in 20 different towns in Massachusetts before?
Right.
Maybe two, I don't know. I mean.
Yeah. There are several towns that have, have started to adopt these.
A source of this kind of sort of format and layout is repeated in a lot of places then?
Yes.
It's like we could point to other towns that have similar.
Right. I'm currently working on one in Portsmouth, Hampshire, North Hampton. I've worked with one down in Bourne.
That are already in place?
Yeah.
Well, you mentioned Wellesley. Do they have a similar?
Wellesley has not exactly like this, but they do have form-based standards. So does Concord has some. Newton is looking at them now. Lexington. There's a number of them that have, you know, in some way, shape or form have adopted standards like this.
Anything on the South Shore?
I can tell you Kingston hasn't.
Since it's brand new, what about Union Point? That's the new development, which was the south, the naval, yeah, air station.
Yes, that is a form-based code, yeah.
Because it's all brand new. I was driving through there just a couple days ago.
I'm sorry, you're right. That is a form-based, and, but that's really dense and.
It's a different animal altogether.
They didn't, they didn't really get the numbers right because there's not a lot of open space integrated into the development. They've got a cottage court, which is in the center of a series of townhouses, which is really bizarre. So yeah, that is a form-based code, but this is lower scale. This is really more for a, a medium size to low size, you know, Village Center.
Okay, nice.
And really, it's basically, it's, you know, it's taking a, a traditional mixed-use center, Village Center, and translating the characteristics, the dimensions, the, you know, the architecture into design standards and zoning standards that, that, that continue that pattern.
So with the, this is Mark, or maybe a question for the board, is let's say we created this new, just are these new, how many are there, eight districts?
Seven districts.
Seven districts. Would we have to explain in less detail each one at town meeting, or would we just say, we're doing this district and here's the things?
I think you would start with the vision of where you're going, right? And saying, this is, what, what we started with was a visioning plan and sort of how do we, how do we, you know, sort of encourage economic development in the right way? And this is kind of the vision of what we were looking for. We've now translated that vision into a zoning, a change in the zoning bylaw that allows us to make that vision happen over time, right? I mean, that, I think that's where you have to go. But then you're also going to have to sort of, at some level, say what you were, what you had before and what you have now, right? I mean, it's kind of like every, every landowner in there is going to say, well, what does that mean to me, right?
Right, right.
And it's sort of like, well, from, from a broad perspective for the town, it means, you know, a pretty good, long-range plan for, you know, the gateway into Situate and development, you know, transit-oriented development and all that stuff. But it also means something to every single landowner there too.
And, and really what you had to do, I mean, this is, there are seven sub-districts here, but if you think about it, there's the Commercial District, there's the Business District, there's the V-Bod, which would be replaced. There's the Residential Two District. There's the PDD District, which in itself has four, five, six sub-districts. So that would be replaced with these new base districts. You still have the, the environmentally-based overlay districts.
Yeah, you can't get rid of the.
No, no, that, absolutely. Those stay in place. But the use-based overlay districts and the, 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 the base districts, the commercial and so on, they would get replaced. So it really doesn't, it really doesn't add it to more. It's just replacing, you know, what's there today.
But I guess my.
With more definitive standards.
Right. My question would be, at town meeting, do they just vote on the zoning districts? Or would they actually vote on what contains?
They vote on the whole, the whole package.
At the whole, so that, yeah, that's going to be confusing.
It's not, it's not going to be, yeah. I mean, in fact, it may not be a standalone bylaw as well. I mean, we may want to integrate these design standards back into 760 and replace what's there. I mean, we may want to integrate these design standards back into seven sixty and replace what's there. Maybe we might want to take the parking standards and integrate those into the site planner view standards. So, you know, it may be that these could sort of.
Well, yeah, I guess.
Can we, can we take a lot of that and put it into certain planning board regulations as opposed to, uh, a bylaw, if you will? I mean, can you, can you build a framework in the bylaw and then take the detail, if you will, and set it up as just regulations, you know, so?
Well, the trouble is you already have regulations in there that were enhancing. So the seven sixty design standards for mixed-use, commercial, you know, multifamily, we're, we're replacing those and we're illustrating those. And we're replacing the V-Bod and illustrating those. So we want to sort of put those together, um, that could represent this district, these districts, or could represent other projects in town. So that's where you'd want to take that piece off and put it back into seven sixty.
So what I'm hearing there is like, let's just say, worst-case scenario, none of this gets approved of, of zoning changes. We could still, on our own, as a board, replace those regu- regulations.
Those are bylaws. Those aren't regulations. Those are bylaws.
That's what I'm trying to figure out here.
Seven sixty is part of bylaws.
I thought at one point Laura said that we could do the form-based, like, the, not the regulations.
As regulations.
As regulations, right?
You could have separate design guidelines, but you have standards. I mean, you have design standards. And that's better anyways, cause it has more teeth.
It's forcing, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I guess this is where it gets just a little bit confusing as to what, like, what's our, what's our backup plan?
Yeah. Well, let's not think of that yet.
Okay, okay. I'm trying to think of plans.
Let's, let's get to the point where we, you know, we're comfortable with this and we need, you know, we, we want, we need to pare it back.
It's gonna take some reading just to understand it.
So be it. But again, I, I put everything in this. This is sort of the catalog and we can, we can take pieces out as, as necessary. I mean, ultimately, the goal is to get, you know, good standards in place for this area. And it means paring this down into, you know, smaller chunks, that's fine.
And I think I read somewhere that you met with the Drew people, is that correct?
We did before the last meeting, yeah.
Right. And so what was their reaction to all of this? I mean, were they?
We never, we, we didn't have the, the bylaw ready. So we're gonna, when, when Brad comes back next week, we're gonna try to sit down with them and some other property owners in the district.
Okay, great.
It just may mean that it's not on track for this town meeting.
Well, that's what I'm thinking too, spring.
Because it's worth the while to talk to your stakeholders and have your stakeholders a hundred percent comfortable before you move forward with all this.
Right.
And so, I mean, with just starting to talk to the stakeholders now, um, it just may.
Yeah, we lost time. We, we were gonna start in the summer, but we got delayed here, so.
It's all about small successes. That's what it's all about. I think we tentatively have something, EDC tentatively has something scheduled for, um, the ninth, tenth, I, we meet next in November, what, ninth?
Twenty-first?
No, no. When's our next November meeting?
For planning board?
Yes.
Planning board is not.
Ninth. We're tentatively looking at the sixteenth of November, it's a Thursday, to meet with some of the stakeholders in Green Bush, if we can pull that off.
Yeah.
And, and have them invited and even talk to them about the possibility, the potential of the Drew property. Just so that, the last thing people want are surprises.
Mm-hmm.
And the more information they have, the less misinformation is running around.
Yep, I agree.
And there's a lot of that.
And this will be, this will be hard.
It will be very difficult, but.
We're gonna take Green Bush and give you more boroughs than you got in New York.
Probably, but Ted, thank you so much.
Sure.
So what's, what are next steps here?
I think, uh, I'm just gonna come back on the twenty-first, is that right, in November?
Reschedule Ted for the twenty-first. You said you wanted to try to schedule at least monthly, so that's what we scheduled.
Yeah.
And he is working, was still with EDC and with Brad and, you know, trying to get the stakeholders.
Mm-hmm. And you're gonna be at a stakeholder meeting?
Yes, I am.
And I guess we see where we go.
Anybody else want a good one?
Yeah.
And I also think the stakeholders should be someone on the selectmen's.
Oh, of course they will be. And I've already spoken with Karen Canfield about that. Yes.
Mentioning that, that's important.
The more people we involve, the better. And it's either gonna, I think Brad is reserving the Maritime Center and/or, if we can, have a private little thingy at the new brewery.
Yeah, I'm for that.
Yeah.
Well, then I'll come.
There you go.
Yeah, so to answer your question, I'd certainly be interested if my schedule allows.
Yeah, if I can, oh, I mean.
Anybody, it's not a question, you're invited.
Right.
Anybody can go. Do we have to post this if all these guys show up?
Yeah, we gotta be careful it's not a planning board meeting.
I mean, we'd probably be better to post, but you're not going to be voting on anything.
No, no. It's just an informational thing.
And they just want to, we may want to post just to protect you, but no votes.
Right.
No, there's nothing to vote on, right?
We also want to do something on cable television too, so. But that's further when we get into refining this and, you know.
Hey, you're doing it now.
So in between now and the twenty-first and the, the meeting, um, what do you need from us? You want comments on this?
Yeah, absolutely. If you want to take the word version of it and mark it up or if, you know, if you email me.
If it's in the draw, I don't remember seeing it in the drop box, but I'll have to look.
And, you know, if you want to schedule a separate time where we can actually sit down and really go through it in detail, rather than start it at nine o'clock at night. Um, I'm, I'm flexible on that. So whatever it takes to get people familiar with it and, you know.
I think at some level, at some point, it probably makes sense to devote some time to it. If, if we're really gonna try to get it, first of all, understand it. Second of all, understand where we think the benefits are, where we should draw the line.
Yeah.
And then to take that and translate it into something we can educate people about.
Right. I mean, it's, it's directed towards the Green Bush area, but the reality is a lot of this stuff could get integrated into the overall bylaws and have, you know, a positive effect on other districts. So that's something to consider as well. But yeah, in the meantime, you know, please read it and if you've got questions, call me or email me or.
I think the Green Bush area is the area that has the most development pressure right now, right? So we probably ought to get to it.
Yeah.
Pressure and potential.
Huh?
Pressure and potential.
And potential, really.
Yeah. I did watch, this was the, the meeting, as I was mentioning, the, the video recording from the meeting that I was not able to be at. And I noticed there were some people in the, the audience that were sort of against development in general in Green Bush, so.
Yeah. I, I think there's gonna be a fair amount of that. I mean, just people don't want to see any change up there. Even if it's just an old parking lot that's not, not used.
The thing is, change comes whether you want it to or not.
Well, that's true. I mean, and, you know.
And we have to.
NPTA is gonna sell it and something's gonna happen there eventually.
Right, and, and I, for one, want to be able to have the, to shape it and have the best that we can have.
I mean, you know, the alternative is really forty Bs and.
Well, I think now's the time to make sure we do it right. Laura's how we did this, didn't come up so great. It was almost been there for a long time.
I think the V-Bod was a good step in the right direction. And it did provide another, you know, opportunity for people, a needed opportunity.
For the other parts of town, if we're gonna be developing, they're not crazy about what happened.
Yeah, yeah.
If I'm the only person in the public, could I ask a question?
You may.
Thank you.
Did you identify yourself?
My name is Bill Dillon. I represent a group that wants to do something at Seven New Driftway. Could you put the zoning map up with the red?
Seven New Driftway, where's that?
That's where the, um, old Driftway Medical Center is, isn't it?
Oh, okay.
So, so Anna had said she'd be in favor of, you know, starting with one small success. And I think, no, I want the, the red map.
The red map?
The real zoning map.
Cause it's zoned residential now.
Okay, so, so this parcel where the, where the medical building is, was almost, in my opinion, spot-zoned when there was a zoning amendment and you took the business district and you put it over here so you could have those new office buildings. But you didn't include this. There was like a gap. I also, and I talked to Bill, uh, the attorney who's here.
Form Burger.
Form Burger, and he said, "You know, it might have been an oversight."
Uh-uh.
Okay, but, um, I dealt with Laura about, you know, over a year ago, about coming to you people with a zoning amendment to say, "Look, could we make this all red and then we have a, a nice plan to do something there?" And what I heard tonight was it doesn't sound like this project really has a high probability of getting through the next town meeting. It's a complicated, seven zoning law of issues. You know, would the planning board be willing to entertain?
I, I think, well, I, I guess my, my immediate reaction is I would want it to dovetail into Plan A.
Yeah.
Even if we did Plan B, if it met sort of the, the intent of Plan A, that's, in other words, I wouldn't want to encourage a development there that essentially ends up being the sore thumb in the game plan for Plan A.
Right, no, right. So everything we wanted to do would, would fit in what you're ultimately trying to get, but I'm trying to make that happen either here or too soon.
What he might want to do is, and this is what happened with the Jacob, was that the Jacob Hatch House? Didn't that, that went through the Zoning Board of Appeals? And then, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, it was considered to be spot zoning, but it was, it went forward. And I think if they wanted, if.
I don't get, I don't understand that. What do you mean?
Yeah, I think it went to the ZBI.
I thought it did.
It may, it may have, but I don't think it did.
I think it got, didn't it get rezoned? I think that's what ultimately allowed it to happen.
Rezone that single building.
Yeah. Which is, oftentimes is considered contract zoning, right?
Spot.
Yeah.
What do you mean? So it was, basically, there were a lot of properties down here that were all by special permit. Right, anywhere from florist to water.
Go back to that, yeah, that one right there.
That is unusual that it's an R-two.
I know, it's bizarre.
I mean, what would make sense is to take a look at the physical area and say, "What makes sense to be a contiguous business area?", and that's what you would propose as a change, right?
Well, it's that building, it's the parking lot next to it.
Well, there's also, it looks like there's residential there too.
We, we did the R-forty district, we included that in the, specifically, I remember. Uh, because we wanted to have that one B, one contiguous area.
Yeah, coming off the rotary into it, you know.
Yeah, that was done, that's, we want to call it that.
It's unlikely to be residential, I mean, right?
I think it's part residential and the parking lot is.
Ninety percent of the site is residential now, ten percent is commercial.
You can see, you can see the building right there, right above the lettering. And then adjacent to it to the right is the parking lot. That's the new zone, but it's, doesn't show the footprint on that building, but yeah, you can see that it's.
Our property is the only property that's not the business zone there.
I think it goes up to the, does it go up to the Brook?
Yes.
It's also in the floodplain too, big time.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's not in the floodplain.
It isn't?
One hundred percent.
Really?
The floodplain lot, lot will be drawn about eight years ago. I, I, we used to have to pay, pay flood insurance, we don't anymore. So I'm positive it's not.
The parking lot is, but not the building.
That could be.
Yeah, the parking lot, but not the building.
It has great potential.
Oh, it has the potential to be the gateway, literally.
That's right.
Fabulous piece of property, if done correctly.
Yeah.
Right, but sort of the "done correctly" is what Plan A is, right?
Right, so.
And so if we could get a jumpstart on Plan A by doing something, that might be an interesting idea, yeah, but.
Although again, just to think, and I, I agree with that, but it would, might be confusing to people if you say, "Oh, we're coming before the town with this zoning change", and then a year later, "Now we're going with the Uber Plan zoning change." It just, I know, I think it could really confuse people, but, but I would.
Not that it's not already confusing right now.
Well, I think we, we need to explain it and why we're doing that.
Yeah, you have to.
It's a commercial property, it's always been a commercial property and it's zoned for R-two and we, we don't want R-two to be there, so it should have been, should have been taken in before probably.
I mean, we do such wacky things in this town. Half of the.
We're not the only town.
I know, but, um, the inn at Situate Harbor, part of that's residential.
Yeah.
As opposed, as well as Harbor District.
But that's on the edge of a residential district. This is sandwiched between two businesses.
I know, I know.
Well, I think maybe to.
Enrony, right.
If you came forward with a potential, like it's a, like a lot of people have done, they do an informal session where you say, "Oh, this is what we're thinking about doing." I think we'd be amenable to look at that and look at the zoning.
Yeah.
Right?
What timing are you hoping for?
Yeah.
And this is, I think he's, the gentleman is trying to say, "Maybe we should be entertaining it almost right now."
Well, I'd like to get on the next town meeting.
That's what I, that's what I thought I heard.
So you're talking about spring town meeting?
Yeah, so that means, you know, moving forward with, you know, getting an article together for the warrant, which is open in December.
Well.
Right, and I can envision a warrant that, that sort of contemplates that change and ties it to some, you know, something that really gives, uh, gives us the ability to make sure it gets done in the right way, right?
So you're suggesting we sponsor it?
Could be.
Would we support it and let, let it citizens sponsor?
Could do it either way, I guess. I, I would want to make sure that it got drafted in a way that we didn't suddenly find ourselves with, no disrespect here, but didn't suddenly find ourselves with, you know, a, a rezoning and then something really wacko showed up on, you know, as, still sort of meets all those required, the current requirements of zoning, right? So I'm just thinking, if you did that, could you sort of link it to sort of the implementation of, of these other kinds of standards, so we know those are the standards we're gonna work to for that particular parcel or something? As a, as the starting point and the key point, right? It is the entrance to everything.
And correct me, it is residential, I know that, but is it part of the, the V-Bod right now?
No.
No? So it's just, so, cause I was thinking that it, it was an overlay.
Doesn't have any overlap.
It's just hanging out there.
No, because the, uh, the, the office building on the south side is not part of the V-Bod either.
Okay, so could we potentially just extend the V-Bod?
It'd have to be mixed-use though.
Yeah.
Residential add.
What are you, what are you thinking of putting in there?
So we're thinking of a, uh, an upscale coffee bagel shop on the first block, commercial, some residential and a boutique hotel.
Oh, wonderful.
And this place is obvious outside.
How many rooms?
Probably, uh, ten or twelve. Yeah, ten or twelve.
So then the V-Bod would work. Then the V-Bod would work.
That's awesome, but that's not, the site's not that large.
We've already met with Concom, we've got it all laid out.
Oh.
We can make it work on that site.
And we do need another boutique.
And you got the, you got the brick behind you, it'd actually be an amenity right there, in the park.
Yeah, we've, when Joni first did the River Shed, when it was called the Burger Joint, we talked about having like a little bridge cross.
Great idea. That way you don't, that way you don't have to walk up the Driftway on your way home, like, there's no sidewalk.
That's a dangerous place to walk.
It is a dangerous place.
Dangerous place to thrive.
Especially after you've been to River Burger, River Shed.
So basically, what we're at, we're thinking about like changing it to commercial and village business overlay? Or are we just saying the village business overlay extending it?
I think village business overlay.
That would be the easiest thing to do.
Cause you don't want to.
Is it has design standards, right?
That's right.
Yeah, so you'd, all you'd have to really do is just, all, but just change that to encompass that parcel. I think that would be a pretty easy town sell.
You couldn't, if it was commercial, you couldn't, you couldn't do the mixed-use. Not allowed to do mixed-use on commercial. So you really need the V-Bod.
Right. And so from the V-Bod to where you're going with the?
V-Bod's sort of an intermediate step. We're absorbing the V-Bod up into the new base.
Yeah, that's, well, that's why I'm asking is from the V-Bod to the, to the design standards, the streetscape standards and all that kind of stuff, is that another level? That, that doesn't exist in the bylaws right now?
I, not substantially, because V-Bod also brings in seven sixty in addition to what's in that bylaw itself. So I think you're, and it's a special permit, so you're pretty well, you know, entitled to shape that development too. It's, and it's such a small site, it's fairly narrow. I mean, you don't have a lot of wiggle room there, so you really can't create any kind of sprawl-type pattern there. It's pretty.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't thinking of sprawl. I was thinking of the look and feel coming in off of the, coming in off the rotary.
I think you got that between the V-Bod and the, uh, and the seven sixty's section, design section.
Now, have you looked at the village business overlay district to know if it would meet your requirements?
Uh, we looked just if you brought the, uh, if we made it all the same zoning as on either side of us, we could do our project.
Want to say the same zoning?
That was the business district though, right?
Yes.
So you've already looked at the village business overlay district and said that that's appropriate?
No.
No, we went all the way.
You did the business district.
Oh, the business district.
But you couldn't put residential in.
Commercial.
That's why I'm a bit confused.
Oh, he may need both, actually. He may need the, the commercial and the V-Bod.
Yeah, I think he needs business.
Business and?
Or the business, yeah, the business.
Well, somehow, some way, we'll figure it all out.
Yeah, I think that's right, the V-Bod and
I, I think the, the general answer is, yeah, we'd be willing to look at it to try to figure out how to do it, right?
I think it's important.
So would we have to, um, like, just for, I know you always have to step back from the, the town meeting and, uh, the warrant, do we have to have like a, an open meeting or a public
Of course.
Of course, yeah, you have to have that.
So that needs to be on the schedule, right?
Yeah.
But, but, if you, if, I already gave you a schedule for that day, essentially. So if, if he somehow gets a bylaw drafted in the next month, then it could be a possibility to have to work. Because you, while you're having stakeholder meetings on this bylaw, you could throw this
Yes.
in there as well.
Okay.
Good.
Absolutely.
And he can come in and lead
Well, I mean, you just presented it as a phased approach to what you're trying to accomplish, right?
That's right.
So what would be the next step? Would it be for him to propose a, a bylaw change or a zoning change, or would that be coming from us? I guess that's where I'm
I think it'd rather come from, from us.
Yeah.
I really do.
I think so, too.
I think it's necessary.
It's, it's the first step of getting to
The rest of it.
Where we're getting, right?
This is the start.
Now, we would certainly want to work with you to sort of make sure we understand what it is you're proposing, and that sort of fits in with this whole vision. It sounds like it does.
Well, if, if you've already got a concept plan you've presented, you may want to present it to the planning board as well.
Yeah, that would be the thing to do, is take a look at it, and we might send it to you.
Sure.
It's not, I, I mean, if we're gonna be, if you're gonna try to do this in a hurry, we're gonna have to hire consultants.
To do what?
To, to write the zoning, probably, so, I mean, where Ted has gotten some of this, already done, we may look to
Oh, you're talking about Ted's stuff?
No, I'm talking about any, something, if you're trying to get something for town meeting this year, to help the gentleman over there, you might, everybody might need to work together.